Hello, everybody. All right, I think we'll start this meeting. And we'll all try to keep the mics as close to our mouths as possible because that allows you here and the people remotely here. Actually, now we're learning how to do this. I'm gonna call and order the planning board meeting of July 6, 2022 by calling Rolle first. Alden Clark.
Here.
Beth Delio.
Here.
Bob Cowan.
Here.
Jamie Pennington.
Here.
Heather Rogers.
Here.
Rick Tinker.
Here.
Richard Jaeger is out with COVID. Don Walters.
Yes.
Bonnie Sontag here. We also have Andy Port, Director of Planning Development, Linda Guthrie, our note taker, and Attorney Tom Lang from AP Law. We go through the agenda. We have a public hearing on 344 Merrimack Street, 6C special permit. It is basically just to review a few details in the decision and then it will take a vote on it. So that won't take very long. The second public hearing is the Institution for Savings, special permit and site plan review, continued from 6:22. Under general business, we have short-term rental review of planning board recommendations that we will be sending on to the city council. We have one letter under correspondence to recognize an approval of minutes for May 18th, and then other updates. Before we get started with the first public hearing, I'd like Director Port to give us a few words about the technology and how we're using it tonight and going forward.
Thank you, Chair. Can you all hear me? Okay, sorry. So that's actually the point for these comments here, and I appreciate the Chair giving a moment. We've had a lot of inquiry from folks about attendance in person, and obviously, the board is here, is back in person from the pandemic. The Joint Department of Appeals is doing the same. The city council has been meeting in the council chambers at City Hall. We are meeting here at the senior center. There's double bookings that can be a problem. So we have different locations that we meet in. We are working with the administration of the planning office, is working with the administration of others to get better equipment in the space, and that's primarily because, well, we have these so-called owl cameras to provide a connection for those at home, those in the room. We want to make sure that the audio is very clear, so everybody can hear what's happening, you know, who said what, and visuals and whatnot. So we are able to do that right now, and we're hoping that everybody can communicate quite clearly at home and here in the room. And that's part of the reason why we're amplifying voices with the microphones. So if you're speaking, if you could get very close to the mic, I think that would work a little better. But if you're using the wireless, maybe this beginner, that way the folks at home can hear what you're saying as well. So with that, I'm happy to elaborate on this, but just to let you know, we are working to put even better equipment in these rooms that is built in and has better reception. And one of the things we are trying to do is to maintain the remote access that we've gained during the pandemic, so that public participation becomes easier for folks not to come to City Hall or the senior center at least for four hours for a public hearing. So or if you may have a disability or otherwise, so it's beneficial, we found, to applicants, to the general public, to the butters, everybody, to be able to do that. So our plan is to try to maintain that as best we can using the equipment of the facilities that we have.
First public hearing is the 344 Merrimack Street, 6C special permit. Is there anyone here representing the applicant? So as you know, we've gone through all of the details of the decision before, and we're just waiting to get confirmation from the Uwekoy historical commission that they have accepted the draft preservation restriction on the existing structure. In the decision, the only thing that I know has changed is adding the date of June 23rd where relevant for the historical commission acceptance of that draft preservation restriction. I believe that happens in three places. But there's nothing else that's changed. Has anybody else reviewed it about anything else that needs to be corrected or added? So we're ready to take the motion to approve this 6C special application for 344 Merrimack Street? If so, I'll take the motion.
Take the motion.
Okay, Rick, and second, please.
I'll second.
Alden, thank you, and I'll call Rolle. Alden?
Yes.
Beth?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Jamie?
Yes.
Heather?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Bonnie? Yes. You're good to go. Thank you for your patience, and we appreciate you coming back again for the decision. Okay, that's done. We will move on to the Institution for Savings, special permit for downtown Hubbleaway District, and company site plan review application. Let me open it up to the applicant for an update on information that we discussed earlier last week.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and members of the board. Hopefully, everybody in attendance can hear me with the microphone, and I'll try and keep my voice elevated. I'm Adam Costa, I'm with the firm of B. Calabrian and Costa. My partner, Lisa Mead, is here with me as well this evening. You're representing the Institution for Savings. I was present as well as Attorney Mead at your June 1 meeting. We opened the public hearing on remand from the Land Court following a multi-session mediation involving representatives of the institution and representatives of the city. We continued that public hearing to your June 22 meeting, but you had these two members who were absent from that meeting, and so the applicant saw a continuance. I understand that you have eight of your nine members this evening, so still not an ideal situation given the importance of the matter. But we understand that there is a need to try and keep the process moving forward, and so we're reporting on that continuance. We presented to you at the opening of the public hearing back on June 1st the commitments that had been made by the Institution for Savings, through the mediation process. These commitments had comprised the substance of our application back to the planning board on remand. And there were five topics in total that I addressed during that initial session of the public hearing, and there was much discussion that occurred not only amongst members of the public through the common period, but also among board members concerning those various topics and some questions that existing board members, maybe to a greater extent newer board members, had those who weren't present during the initial original proceedings before the board on the institution's project. So we submitted a follow-up letter on June 13th, 2022, a brief letter, about a page and a half, that addressed really three topics that had been topics of discussion at the June 1 meeting. The first one relates to the first-floor windows. I'm hopeful that all of you have either read or read out the correspondence before you hear this June 13 letter. The first topic is identified on page one, first-floor windows and the type of glass to be used and its effect on the appearance of the building. And what was explained to the board back on June 1st is that there had been significant discussion, not only during the original public hearing process, but also during the two mediation sessions concerning the type of glass that we utilized to ensure that there would be no light or wood layer or still to affect neighboring residential properties in particular. And the commitment that had been made as part of the mediation process is that the use of glass would be what's called spandrel glass. Christopher Angelakis, the project architect, is here with us this evening and can certainly elaborate on what that is, although I think it was discussed with sufficient enough detail back on June 1st that you all understand what it is. There was further requests or comments or questions from a couple of members concerning whether there was any ability to do something slightly different from the spandrel glass, at least on the facade of the building facing Prospect Street. So we proposed here, and it's only for your consideration, if you're comfortable with spandrel glass, that's a commitment that we've made. But we have proposed with respect to the Prospect Street facade, and I'm just gonna read the potential condition that we spelled out. Taking into consideration the impacts of light and acoustical emission from the first floor of the Prospect Street in our place, the applicant will design and install a shadow box designed for the maximum depth possible in light of sight constraints. The windows on the rear of the Garden Street side of the structure would remain in the spandrel glass as we previously committed. So this is a proposal. I didn't see if the draft decision compared my staff at an advanced meeting that this particular potential condition, I didn't find its way into that draft. I suspect that your staff wasn't sure whether it was something that was of any interest to the board as a whole. It was, again, only a couple of members that had raised this concern or question, but we wanted to give you an additional option. And again, if you have additional questions as to what that might mean, Mr. Angelakis can address that for you.
Yeah, let's stop it. Let's continue with that topic for now.
Sure.
Are there any additions or comments to that condition or what Attorney Costa has presented? Yeah.
I think it is important that it be included as a condition. I would be interested if there could be a description of what the architects are thinking about.
Sure. After you, Madam Chair. Happy to have Christopher speak to that.
Yes.
Can you restate your question?
Just interested in what you were thinking about relative to the shadow box.
Shadow box. Well, so it's gonna have to do with how the windows systems get detailed. In a house not done with being able to get maybe three inches of clearance with either back, either metal panel that behind the metal panel that has insulation and has the back structure. And so what you're seeing is a painted surface behind fully transparent glass. So the glass, three inches of airspace, and some painted surface, three or so inches. I think that's probably doable. We have to work out the details right now, you know, to have a window type, a window system specified. So it's gonna have to do with whatever specific window types are coming in coming here. I think that's why the language that we said is at the maximum depth possible for. So I think it's very important. I agree with you. Probably a better detail for the lower floors. I would say it's the Prospect Street and the Oda Street side that would probably be the appropriate for that. Whereas the Garden Street side, I think we would ask to say, you know, spandrel glass is not as appropriate.
I think so. I guess one, just one last detail. I assume that.
Sorry.
Can you try to.
This is the end. Yeah. If folks could just speak clearly into the microphones, it'll help with the folks at home feeling this way.
I'm not.
Thank you. I think, yeah, you have to be a little closer. Sorry, just in front of the word. Thank you.
As you look at that detail, I assume you'll also be looking at color for the metal panel behind the glass.
Yeah, I think in general, I think your project taking the spandrel glass is so that it looks uniform in the daytime. All the other glass, which would tend to make that back panel darker, because glass goes black in the daytime.
Thank you, Rick.
Any other questions about this particular condition? Can I just give clarification on the condition that you posed? Does that specify Prospect and Oda Street?
It is for the first floor of Prospect and Oda Street is the way that the condition is drafted. Again, it was our condition. We don't want to take ownership of the board's decision. If you see that to proceed with approval, you can obviously modify the language, but that is what we propose in our correspondence.
Was there any problem with taking care of the proposed condition?
No, actually, the reason the office included, I think it was Mr. Grubin had raised a question earlier in the meeting about that detail because he might have some expertise or experience with that particular detail. The office did not. We thought it might be helpful if the board members could review that and decide whether that was adequate or whether or not you think some other verbiage, like we're able to capture.
I think the language is fine. Okay, folks. Thank you.
Okay. The reason I'm asking is that any condition that we agree, we want to know that the language is good and will be incorporated into the decision, but we need to vote on each condition as they come up. And so I wanted to make sure that this was the way we wanted to state it. So at this point, I take a motion to incorporate this condition into the final decision. Alden takes that. Second?
I'll second.
Jamie? And, sorry, guys, I have to go through the vocal again. Alden?
Yes.
Beth?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Jamie?
Yes.
Heather?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Bonnie? Yes. So that will be next.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Chair. So the second topic we addressed, and we got a maybe a lengthier discussion on this particular topic back at the June 1 meeting, is the issue of vehicle queuing and specifically queuing in connection with the stagger parking that we proposed as part of the project. You recall, when I gave a background, and I know those of you who were on the board a year and a half or two years ago are familiar with the process that was undertaken, where initially the vehicle parking was on-site. We moved the vehicle parking on-site, and the mechanism we utilized in order to achieve that outcome was we incorporated this concept of stagger parking. A couple of members, I think a member in particular raised questions about whether it was possible for vehicles to queue in such a way that they would not interfere with traffic on the adjacent roadway, specifically on the adjacent Prospect Streets. And so what I indicated at that last meeting is clearly two things. Number one, that we had had a traffic study done that acknowledged or addressed the issue generally of traffic generated by the project that the number of vehicle trips that would be, by which the project would be increased as a consequence of the condition. But also that we would take a closer look at trying to present some sort of information. What we ultimately did was a graphic, a system where you could see here, the graphic that we produced, showing that in the event, we're careful in what we say, because it's been indicated to us through the discussions we have with our experts, that there should really not be any circumstance where there is vehicle queuing. It's certainly not easy, sort of significant vehicle queuing you see here with five vehicles waiting with a six-vehicle about to enter a parking area. The reason for that, and I explain it here in the correspondence, is that city lift representatives have testified at previous meetings of this board that it takes approximately 33 seconds to retrieve a car once the vehicle is called. The individuals who are employed at the Institution for Savings facility will have key fobs that will provide them with quick access to the facility. Additionally, and importantly, there, you can see here that in the event that there were to be vehicle queuing, there is sufficient space on-site for that queuing to occur without the queuing to do one of two things, either back up on the Prospect Street or to interfere with on-site circulation. It's important specifically in the morning to know that there are a number of different shifts that are staggered. And so I had said here in the correspondence that shifts generally arrive between 7:00 a.m. and 9:00 a.m., and the shifts typically depart between 4:00 p.m. and 6:00 p.m. So that's important, because you're not going to have everybody arriving at the same time, everybody partying at the same time. But even in the circumstance where you had a number of vehicles that might be arriving simultaneously, there would be sufficient space, even if it happens to be at the later part of that morning window from 7:00 to 9:00, when maybe you have some activity, other activity at the bank. You have a situation, as you can see here in the graphic, where those vehicles can queue on-site. And if you notice, there are a couple lanes. There's a lane to provide queuing, but there's also a second lane that's around that aisle. So there is no circumstance where those vehicles are going to compete and access over to the outdoor parking spaces that are on-site. So that's the purpose of this graphic that we prepared. We attached to our June 13th correspondence a copy of Ron Mueller Associates' May 13, 2020 Traffic Analysis, which was several pages and had a number of charts from the Institute of Traffic and transportation engineers, manual, citing to location, type of use, et cetera, and including generally that because of the nature of the use, because of the size of the addition, because of the representations in terms of uses of that addition, not necessarily providing additional services beyond what the bank already provides, but to accommodate existing services. It's not a circumstance where you're doubling or tripling, let's say, the size of a restaurant by adding tables, by adding seats, and therefore by attracting a greater clientele. We're still dealing with approximately the same number of employees. So I think the goal of the term here is that we might be dealing with maybe one additional, two additional vehicle trips, and the conclusion reached by Ron Mueller was that it was negligible within the daily fluctuation in traffic and not expected to have an operational impact on surrounding streets. So you have that additional information now, or at least we rehash some of what we presented previously. But I'll take a breath and see if there are any questions on that topic.
Have there any questions? One.
Okay. The last topic we addressed in the June 13 letter was a request that, again, we devoted some time to at the June 1 meeting, which is the materials that will be used. We spent a lot of time discussing the aesthetic of the addition. We spent a fair amount of time discussing what was reviewed through the mediation process in terms of aesthetic, yes, compared to the existing building. What can be done in terms of design and penetration to avoid appearance of height or massing? And there were questions concerning, well, what are the specific materials that are going to be used in this particular location or that particular location on the building? And I don't want to speak for Christopher, but I'm sure that he'll agree that what was essentially stated was that we're not at that stage in the design necessarily, where we have all those spine details. We don't have item numbers or manufacturers. But what was requested of us is that we try and put together it best we can based upon the commitments we've made and what we know so far in preparing the renderings and architectural designs that we presented to the board, put together a general classification of the materials that will be used. And so we provided to you as an attachment, my correspondence, how it's a one-page document, something that is entitled classification of materials to be used. And it addresses everything from curving and baseboards, mortar joints, windows, cornices and roof valley flashing and ridge tapping, connector feature, mechanical loopers, garage doors, with some degree of detail. What I will say, and I don't want to steal Mr. Port's thunder, and I'm sure when he speaks to the decision that he drafted, but there is a provision in both the proposed special permit and the proposed site plan approval that acknowledges the fact, as is often the case with these sorts of projects, that there is finer design to occur as the process unfolds, as the development process unfolds, and that it would be a closure reconstruction. And there's a provision that indicates that there will be an opportunity for that information to be submitted and reviewed at the staff level to verify that it is generally consistent with the representations we've made and the information we've presented in this additional attachment. And if there is any question, anything that goes beyond the four corners of what we committed to or that staff is uncomfortable with, then they would refer that to the board for the board to act on a request to modify the decision. But otherwise, there would be some check or balance at the staff level to make sure they won't represent anything as consistent with what we promised to provide as part of this permanent process.
Now, if this is a question for Andy, one of the listing plans and documents, there was a to-be-determined cornice and fascia and connector copper panel option number.
Yes, we understood the board had in the last meeting conclusively decided which of those options had preferred. So if there was a determination of that, we're inserting that in there. The bank had proposed, I think, three options.
And we'll make a standing scene or we can make a different decision at the time of the mock-up when we review that. But I have this on now that Attorney Costa has been referring to June 15. I just want to make sure that you have the right information to place in this part of the decision when we go into the document.
And Madam Chair, your regulation is correct, and Mr. Port just had it on the screen, has again on the screen option one, two, and three that we presented previously. So we did represent in our, in our June 13 letter that the applicant is willing to make the connector a standing scene and that was the general sense that we got from the board from the June 1 meeting. But we were not certain of that. I'm not sure staff was certain of it, hence the blank of the decision.
Good. So does anyone want to comment on this? And the kind of cornice? Specific knowledge of copper cornices, want to speak up?
Well, I think I mentioned standing scene.
Please speak into your microphone and make sure it's on. Press it hard.
Testing. Can you hear me?
Yes.
So I think I said standing scene. I don't know if anyone else even spoke, but I would stay by that as my preference.
I do.
Okay. We're just going standing scene.
Sorry, could you, could we speak to the option number? Is that?
Sorry, I don't recall. I think it was three, but I don't.
If you just make a note, standing scene, you have the option, say, document.
So we're talking about the copper?
Yes, copper.
Right, so.
It was thirty.
Three.
Oh, I don't know. Maybe there's a fourth. I don't.
Oh, I'm sorry.
There you go.
Sorry. Okay, so we're on the board.
Yeah, so I might be able to clarify. I don't think it's a trivia. So race seams is the fourth option. So we show where we think those seams will be, which are sort of coming from the geometry of the windows, standing up the tiers. That seam, that seam for anybody usually stands off the face of the copper about an inch, inch and a half.
All right, and there it is. Attorney Costa commented the fifth special condition that she will hear when we review the decision is to remove the materials away and they remember from the planning department and bring it back to us for bearing considerations. It's not what we want to bring. Does that include your information for tonight?
So it does, my understanding, Madam Chair.
Excuse me, just a moment.
I have one last question on materials. About windows, yeah. If I read the text of the list of materials, it says, "The windows are aluminum clad, double-pane wood windows with snap-in volume grits." So I, I'm okay with aluminum clad wood windows, but I'm a little concerned about snapping volume grits, which seems to be always common in not many, but aluminum quality.
I can understand that, however, at that initial level, but we have need an energy code. That's the weakest part of our envelope, so we tend to have one pane of double-glazed insulated unit that fills the window and then create the molye work. I mean, I think we have to get a variance.
If you did simulated divided light? If you need an energy code?
We generally do, yeah.
I mean, that's a much higher quality.
Okay, we can absolutely look at that.
Just that rather than the snapping form.
Okay.
So one, one piece of glass, but it's.
Yes. That's fine. I think we can have.
Change the mind.
Here we have that. Is that a special condition?
I understand that that would be an additional special condition. If you're clear about that particular point.
Okay, so we're gonna add another condition, which will be incorporation of simulated divided light windows.
Aluminum clad, which windows with simulated divided glass.
Simulated divided glass. I'm gonna just catch that on the end of the, that's the last.
That is it.
And I think, Madam Chair, just to be clear, that the condition should acknowledge that that's what controls over the classification of materials to be used, because, remember, who was referring specifically to our statement that there would be snap-in molye grits in this seminal. So just to avoid any inconsistency between the application, this document, and the decision.
So will we amend that to that list? Okay. I need to take a quote in relation to add that condition to the special permit. And second?
Second.
Call Rolle to approve that. Alden?
Yes.
And?
Yes.
Yes.
Jamie?
Yes.
Heather?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Bonnie?
Yes.
Okay.
So, Madam Chair, I understood that you did not want me to rehash and re-present Alden was presented at the first session of the public hearing, so I've not done so. Having said that, I just want to offer this. I don't know how you intend to end up the remainder of the meetings you're going to permit and how extensive a public comment you're going to, I presume, will. And so I would just ask for the opportunity, if there are further questions that board members have as a result of public comment or as deliberations occur, that I have an opportunity for the rest of the time to get a sense of where board members stand as compared to maybe where they were five or six weeks ago when obviously Mr. LaVine wasn't attending, and I understand that you for the record in this ineligible voter. But if there are additional questions that arise as discussions occur tonight, I just appreciate the opportunity to the rest of us.
Certainly, okay.
Thank you.
All right. We are going to move on to public comment. There's several things that have, well, there are two things that have to happen before we open it up for public comment. First, I'd like to call, so what we're gonna do is I'm gonna ask Attorney Lang to make a statement. There are some counselors who have asked me to make statements since they don't want to make them themselves. And it happened in the last meeting. There was a conflict with some council meetings, and they couldn't be here. So if those counselors want to make their own statements, they're certainly willing to do so, but I'll read them into the record in a while. And then we will go to public comment in the room, and then we will go to public comment in the lobby. So let's, I will open. Open public comment and begin with Attorney Lang. You have to hold it white, right up to your lip. You have to hold it light, right up to your lips.
Like that?
Yeah, but it's got to be working.
And you got to talk loud. You have to be very loud and close. You have to be very loud.
Is that working now?
Yes.
Sufficient?
As loud as you can, close.
Okay, just fairly, I was asked by the chairman to comment on the mediation process and how we arrived with what was happening here. I represented the planning board in front of the land court. We went for initial conference in front of the land court last year, but court strongly suggested to the parties that they should pursue all efforts to mediate this case, to resolve this case before moving forward with the court at that time. The court also stated at that time, in light of the three-pronged slate, that they intended, the court intended to rule on the legality of the DOD district before considering the merits of any decisions in the matter. At that point, I reported back to both the planning board and to the city council as to what was happening. The city council authorized us to pursue the possibility of mediation to determine how we could move forward. And the city council, along with other city officials, appointed the mediation committee that attempted to gain numerous members, including Mayor Holliday, city council president at the time, Jared Igerman, councillor Heather Shan, Bonnie Sontag was on the committee's chair in the planning board, along with MJ Verdi, Richard Jones participated, Andrew Porter participated, and Mayor Holliday participated. We exchanged communications with Attorney Costa and his firm, and as he stated last week, they put written conditions, they were, they're unwilling to move directly from the mass of the project, but we determined that it was more important to discuss other alternatives to see what could be done to move forward at the mediation stage, again, because it's an ongoing negotiation. And mediation took place, it was an eight-hour mediation at the end of September, it was a follow-up seven-hour mediation, and as a result of that, mediation agreement was reached, which made the five changes that were outlined by Attorney Costa last week and presented at that point. That mediation agreement was signed off by all parties who participated in the mediation agreement, who agreed to support the mediation agreement and to support this new amended remand proposal. An order was filed with the court to remand the case back to the planning board for the decision. At the time, the city charter allowed the city council to approve any, not the decision itself, but to pursue any type of settlement that was involved. The city council did not approve the remand back to the board at that time, even though the remand order had been issued. The matter then returned to land court and Justice Spicer at a hearing in early December, where he strongly criticized the parties. He criticized the city very strongly and said that the city should have allowed this to go in the planning board directly, that the planning board is the zoning authority and land use expert in the city that should be making this decision, not a politically elected board. Judge Spicer strongly pushed us at that point to consider that, and then ordered a briefing scheduled if the matter was wanting to go forward. In the new year, council president Chan spoke to me, and she had spoke to other members of the board, we relayed what Judge Spicer had said. Judge Spicer, then city council president, we had an executive session, I did meet an executive session called the planning board, and I met an executive session with the city council, explained what Judge Spicer had said, explained what the order was at that point, and then the city council then took up the vote again, not to approve or disapprove the application, but to approve or not to allow a remand back to the planning board, which Judge Spicer had requested to be the board to make the decision. Judge Spicer had said in open court that he was in the mind to send the matter directly back to the planning board himself, because he viewed it very strongly this was a decision that should be made by the planning board. At the most recent city council open session meeting, the vote took place, it was a seven four vote, to allow the remand back, and again, it's a remand of the amended application of what was involved. It was very clear with the city council vote, they were not recommending approval or denial either way, they were only allowing the matter to be sent back to the planning board, the planning board to exercise its discretion in reviewing the amended application that was produced through mediation, and that's why we're here for the second meeting today.
There is another question that's come up, and there's been some concern about something that everybody has heard from Attorney Costa at the beginning of the first public hearing on this issue, and that had to do with what's been characterized as preconditions going into the settlement agreement. Could you speak to that as well?
I'd be happy to. Letters were exchanged, and I would not characterize it as a precondition, I would characterize it as a negotiation that took place. The IFS presented some of their demands, they had suggested what type of alternatives could be reached. We had written back a letter after meeting with the mediation committee and made several different proposals to address some of the issues that were involved. We spent numerous time at the mediation, going through all of those proposals, going through what could possibly be done to address some of the other issues, when it became after the first mediation session, part of what we asked for was additional documentation from their engineers to why certain things could not be done, including there were some suggestions to lower the grade of the building, which affected stairs, and they had a letter presented to their, from their engineer, that that was not possible. We had the city engineer review that letter, review the materials that were submitted, and the city engineer agreed that that would not be a possible alternative, and vouched strongly back at that, that this was the best alternative to allow for those conditions. That's when the second mediation session took place, when the agreement was reached.
Thank you very much. Now I'd like to go to the councillor's statements before the public comment. Is councillor Shan on or vote by any chance?
No, just got a hearsay.
I'm going to read her statement first, because it reiterates, I mean, it reiterates what Attorney Lane just said. Regarding Order 332-0328-2022 authorizing the settlement, IFS and Planning Board, the council voted seven-four to return the mediation results between the city and the institution for savings to the planning board. The city council's vote was intended to allow the planning board to have final judgment on the IFS application. The city council is not the expert in land use and solely wants the final decision on the application to be made by the planning board, regardless of the outcome. And that was from council president Shan. I have a letter here from councillor Donahue, and she's in the room, and I'd like to know if you'd like to state your position on this issue yourself, or would you like me to read this two-page letter?
Oh, I actually thought that it was read previously, but it wasn't.
No, we didn't have a meeting that night.
Okay.
So this is the meeting that would have happened the night you couldn't be here. So I'm giving you the opportunity to do it, and if you want to, you'll have to go into the stand and speak into the microphone. Or would you like me to read all of this?
Maybe wait for a second, then you'll be ready.
Okay. It's been, I don't know where it is.
It's been posted.
It's been posted. You should also know before I read this, that councillor Donahue and I have had discussions and have clarified some issues here. She was concerned about a variety of things around the process as well as the content, to know that a lot of this has been worked out in her whole way. This is from councillor Donahue, dated June 6, 2022. Although I was unable to attend the June 1st planning board meeting, I've heard from other councillors and citizens who weren't attendees. Reaching out to share with you some more to resident concerns, many of which I agree with them all, please excuse the length of this letter. First, because the June 1 hearing was an in-person only meeting, many Newburyport citizens did not have the opportunity to listen in or comment on the IFS settlement proposal. I also would have been able to listen and speak on behalf of my ward to constituents if it was on Zoom. I understand two planning board members intended via Zoom, although it may be more difficult, I recommend that if this was for the previous meeting, they could continue to tonight, so she's referring to the June 22nd meeting. For additional public comment, cannot be on Zoom in the senior center, but the meeting be moved to city hall auditorium. I will be out of town, would like to listen to it. Meeting notes and recordings of the June 1 meeting should be available to residents as soon as possible. One reason I voted no to remand the IFS settlement proposal to the planning board in April was because of my concern that new board members perceive that the city council was in favor of approving this project. That could not be further from the truth. I find it very disconcerting that now that my legitimate concern of this misconception has in fact resulted in some members of the planning board being confused on meaning of the city council's vote to remand the issue to the board. As a result, it appeared that some of the planning board members believed and endorsed the mass scale of this IFS project. That is not the case, and not what the city council voted on. In April, the city council members only voted that the planning board was simply the appropriate body to do its homework and make a fair decision to the city on this topic. While I cannot speak for every city councillor, I can say with certainty that the majority of the councils is not in favor of this project and the impact it will have on the neighborhood, our DOD, and ultimately our relationship as a city, with the bank and other project developers in the future. Most concerning is the constituents' trust of city government will be eroded. Residents believe that the planning board's new vote would be only regarding those specific items on the proposed settlement if they changed the reasons for March 2021 rejection. Primary rejection reasons were size, height, and mass, too big, not subordinate to the 1870s building, as per the historic commission's DOD ruling, not compatible with the historic residential area on the size. I, like many of the residents, believe those reasons have not changed, and the proposed settlement should be sent back to the land court for a decision. Both parties will have the opportunity to review the judge's decisions, should they not be satisfied with the outcome. Now it has also come to my attention that during the 6-1 meeting, okay, this is all the issue having to do with prior settlement conversations, but I will read it. During the 6-1 meeting, the IFS lawyer stated that prior to the settlement conversations, and has a requirement for settlement conversations, the city of Newburyport agreed that IFS does not have to reduce the square footage of the structure, and that including the historic commission not be mandatory in this decision. This is new news to me and to residents at the 11th hour of this entire process. Do you know who approved this pre-salment concession? Is there a signed document regarding these pre-salment concessions? I also don't know if city council members were aware of this prior to the voting vote in November and April. This certainly changes everything if this is true. Finally, the way this process has rolled out, the land court did not deliver the proposed settlement request to the planning board until sometime in May, and June 1 was your first meeting. So next public comment meeting being scheduled for June 22nd, and a decision provided to the court by June 24th. I appreciate your efforts to meet the deadline, however, I believe this has not given your new planning board members and the public sufficient time to do old research, understand the issues, be comment, deliberate, decide. That is the end of councillor Donahue's. And the third statement I was given comes from councillor Preston. Is she available online?
I do not see her.
All right, this is only four paragraphs, and I will read it. It was dated June 13, 2022. There appears to be some confusion on why the city council sent the decision on the IFS settlement to the planning board. I was one of the councillors that voted for that action, and I wanted to explain my thinking in hopes it will clear some confusion. Of course, I am only one of 11 councillors, and I do not speak for any of my colleagues on council. This email should serve as only my opinion. A rationale for sending the decision to the planning board was based on the legal advice from KP Law. It was my understanding that the judge presiding over the case was dissatisfied that the previous city council took the decision to reject the settlement and felt that decision should have come from the planning board. It was also my understanding that if the planning board were to reject the settlement, the city would have a better chance of winning in land court and/or appeals if the decision on the settlement came from the planning board rather than the council. Lastly, I have no particular expertise in land use and feel that land use experts such as the members of the planning board would better serve the citizens of Newburyport to make the decision. I want to be very clear that my vote to send the decision on the settlement to the planning board was not a request or expectation for you to accept the settlement. In fact, the original ordinance had language recommending that the planning board accept the settlement, and I amended the language to take out that recommendation. My amendment was accepted by the sponsor, council president Heather Shan, and the ordinance that passed does not have any such recommendation to either accept or reject the settlement. I sincerely hope that the members of the planning board feel unencumbered in your decision on the settlement and use your best judgment based on the merits of the application. I greatly respect the work that all of you do. Newburyport runs on the backs of dedicated volunteers like you. Thank you for your service to Newburyport, to the people of Newburyport. Councillor Preston. Now I will open public comment to everybody in the room who would like to speak. I ask you to give your name, your address, and limit your comments to two minutes. You should also limit your comments to what you have heard tonight from the applicant, and in this case, I suppose, anything from other members of the public on statements such as Brett. But we do want to hear what you have to say tonight, and please, if you agree with someone else, keep it short and sweet, and just say briefly what you agree with, and let us move on to the next person. As I did on June 1st, if you'd like to speak, I recommend that you queue up around the far side here and get ready to move up to the podium when the speaker has, previous speaker has finished. So anyone who would like to speak, please come forward.
Good evening. Tom Colerdon, 64th F. L. Co-president of the Newburyport Reservation Trust. The trust still opposes this project. This should have been a collaborative project with the neighborhood from the beginning, sadly, it's not. Unfortunately, this project still affairs the integrity and character of this historic neighborhood. It is still detrimental to the neighborhood. This project is not in harmony with the purpose and intent of the DOD. This is a massive project store, and has always been from the very beginning. Minor changes do not make it any more acceptable. The neighbors deserve better. We hope you will vote no on tonight. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Pete Mackens. I live at 13 Prospect Street. As a director of butter, I am opposed to the IFS settlement. I believe you would also be if someone was putting a 20-foot, 24-foot high and 122-foot wide brick wall only 14 steps outside your front door. But then, that's just my opinion. But tonight, your vote must be based on facts and the DOD requirements. Let's talk about some facts. The March 2021 planning board did and rejected this same building. That's a fact. The Newburyport Historical Commission ruled it did not comply with the DOD and the Department of Interior Regulations. That's a fact. They both ruled it was too big. That's a fact. They both ruled it was not subordinate to the original 1870s building. That's a fact. They both ruled and denied the permit. In November of 2021, the city council rejected this same exact proposed settlement and sent it back to the land court. That's a fact. Why are we here again? We would not be here if the bank had not sued our city to abolish the DOD. That's a fact. We would not be here if our past city leadership, behind closed doors and ignoring the governing process, had not given IFS the two pre-meditate mediation concessions that were the primary process, had not given IFS the two pre-mediate mediation concessions that were the primary reasons undermining the previous planning board's rejection. That's a fact. Now it's your turn to make a decision. Please reject this proposal. Send it back to the land court for a legal decision. Do the right thing. Make your decision based on the DOD regulations and based on facts. Thank you very much.
Members of the planning board, hello. My name is Steve Niffmeyer, and my family lives in the historic Perry J. Swallow House at 4 Otis Place. Friends, the process leading to tonight's vote has been bewildering. Our Historical Commission is opposed to this project. Earlier, planning board denied it. City Council did as well, but yeah, here we are back again. In my view, along with, I think, the perspective of many people in Newbury Port, this is a defining moment in the character and identity of Newbury Port. Do we care about the history and the preservation of our city? Many brave Newbury Port residents worked hard and fought hard for the historic preservation of Newbury Port in the early 1970s. It changed the course of our city, and it shaped our very identity. When we look back at this board, will we be proud, or will we be sad that our city has lost an important moment to protect our heritage? Tonight, will you be brave and send the projects back to Land Court? Please do so. Newbury Port will remember. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Clara Papanostas. 3 Orange Street. I was previous abutter to the bank at 4 Otis Place, where Steve now lives. I'm number one, I'd like to thank all the effort that has gone into to explain what happened behind closed doors, the process. It is much appreciated. Transparency is so important to how we conduct ourselves. However, I keep on going back to the fact that the proposal in front of you, proposed settlement before you tonight, contains an expansion plan designed as the same size that was rejected at planning board in March 2021. So in my eyes, it still falls short of the DOD. Whilst the negotiation, we look at it as a pre-concession. The main issue of size was taken off the table before negotiations began. So how could they be meaningful? Please reject it.
My name is District Malatsi. My family lives at 16 Prospect Street. I oppose the IFS extension. Criteria established by the DOD includes a statement that new construction shall not disrupt the essential form and integrity of the subject building or setting of the DOD, which of course is the neighborhood. Post-expansion worth adjacent residence, its large, singular design, and institutional nature would absolutely disrupt the essential form and integrity of the neighborhood. I realize that this is a judgmental call, but please consider this point carefully. Can you really plunder a large institutional building down in the middle of a residential neighborhood and expect it not to disrupt the essential form and integrity of the neighborhood? The DOD also states that the special permanent agreement shall quote "adhere to any relevant provisions of the United States Secretary of Interior Standards for treatment of historic properties." With respect to size, that's standard states on page 162 within a list of what's not recommended the following, putting right. "Constructing a new building on a historic property or on an adjacent site that is much larger than the historic building, at twice the size of the original historic building, this new building is certainly much larger than the historic building. It is therefore in direct contradiction with the Secretary of Interior..." Due to this contradiction and the contradiction regarding disrupting the essential form and integrity of the building or setting, it should be concluded that this extension is not compatible with the DOD. The residents regret the planning board to give detailed consideration to guidelines laid out in the DOD and those from the Secretary of the Interior. Such consideration should clearly show once again that this expansion is not compatible. It should be rejected. With the land court aside. Thank you.
My name is Carol Piper of 12 Otis Place, and I don't want to reiterate what everyone was saying, but I'm totally aware of it. The building was just too big. They said it was too big back in March when they ignited, and now we're looking at the same plan. That's, I can't understand why we keep going through this. So I'm asking for a no vote.
Hi, I'm Peter Mackey, 9 Otis Place, 10th Street. I want to, something that the chairman read in the statements, last statement, was, was spoken to me where the, sorry, I don't remember who it was from, said that they appreciated the efforts to go into the boards. And I want to start by saying how much I appreciate all the work that all of you put in on a volunteer basis. It's an enormous effort, and it is greatly appreciated. It was an enormous effort by the seating board, of course, more than one meeting. It was similar effort by the Historic Commission, of course, several, many hours of public comment, many hours of deliberation, all with the same result, turning around to the institution and effectively saying, no, engage with the neighbors and come back with something better. So here we are with a new board, a new year, still dealing with the institution, disregarding your predecessors' advice, at no point has there been engagement with the neighbors. At any point. The only, the closest we've come has been the institution being quoted in the paper saying, everything we do isn't good enough. We just can't satisfy the neighbors. This would give the impression that they've had anything to do with us, even though your predecessors said engage with the neighbors. They have not. So please take that into consideration. I do wish you well. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Anne Blosson, up here yet again, two years later. Thank you all for coming on this evening. And I want, I don't need to reiterate what everyone said, but thank you to Claire and councillor Donahue and Rich, everyone who spoke prior to me. I agree with everything they said. It's been a long time coming. The planning board did vote, the historic commission did vote. We are right across the street from where this massive building we're looking at tonight. The proposal would be if you, you know, do not object it. I'm asking you to please reject it, let it go back to Land Court, let them decide. I think that's it. I want to cut any more of your time, but please listen to the planning board and the Historic Commission. Thank you.
Erin Blosson, 3 Otis Place. Again, I want to also admit that the planning board members not experienced the chair's request. I'm not going to reiterate everything that folks have said tonight or in previous meetings. I think that just the key comment that I want to key on is that this process is in stark contrast to the work that many of the planning board members have put into this project previously. One of the defining features of the DOD is the fact that the historic commission provides professional opinion, review, recommendation of a proposal consistent with the DOD design guidelines. That process was done with deep analysis, both, I think, with this planning board or previous planning boards' participation, but really deeply with the historic commission. They're the subjects, topic areas, subject experts that represent the city, represent the city in the context of the design guidelines for the DOD and the intent of this ordinance. And I think, you know, it's concerning and problematic in fact that we have a project that is substantially similar or the same to the project that was already denied by this board and viewed and recommended by the historic commission to be denied, and the fact that we're looking at essentially the same project, except for some leaking around the edges without this sort of commission's professional insight into that, and it's not going into some details that have been talked about tonight, in that manner. So it's a concern that this isn't following the DOD process, understanding there is a repent, that there is a settlement process that did take place, but it seems to me that you've all been handcuffed by that process. Although that's been laid out to that way, you still do. I do agree with the judge on that, that you aren't the land use decision authority in this case, not the judge, not the settlement committee. It's this board. So I ask that you, urge that you, thank you.
Hello, my name is Sean Sullivan. I live at 9 Prospect Street. My wife and my daughter. Erin just spoke to everything that I was concerned with. But I would, I would urge the newer members of the council to really, there's a lot of effort, and a year and a half, two years into this process, and I hope that the new members take on the responsibility of DOD and representing the DOD and go back to the last fight. The last board was very clear in two areas that it did not meet. Downtown requirements, failure to comply with the U.S. Secretary of Interior Standards and the lack of compatibility with the adjacent historic properties due to size, scale, and mass. It was very clear in the last decision, and I hope that you would vote against this. Yeah.
Good evening, all of you. Thank you very much. My name is Bruce O'Callaghan. I live at 5 Broadfield Place. I'm also a Newbury Port city councillor at large. There'll be a cross between my personal feelings as a citizen of Newbury Port, somewhat of that of a Newbury Port city councillor, speaking on behalf of the constituency. All of what was just said prior, I think, holds really, really well, and I hope that you consider again what has been said and what was agreed upon, and what you decided previously, and go back to that decision. I think that we are here, unfortunately, because we ran into a judge who didn't particularly like the process of our city. Simply stated, I don't like it. Give it to me to send back to the planning board. And that's what took place at city council meeting. I think that it's really, really important that we are here because of that, not because of what the city council did per se. Please take it back, take a look at it the way you took a look at it before, listen to what was said before us, before me rather, and vote no on this. Big, too big, too massive, not complying, and it certainly doesn't speak well for the community to, for this institution to step forward and plump this right smack down into this historic area. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Jack Santos, 10 Spring Street, former resident of Otis Place, a few years back. Just three points, I'll try to be short, but I do have, all of my points is graphic. Is it possible to just end up with some copies of it to the board? Would that be okay?
We can get copies to the board members if you'd like. If one handed to me, we can pass it on.
And literally, ditto, whatever he says is true. You know, we don't have to go over reasons why the historic commission threw this down and the prior planning board turned this down. I'm a little concerned about the precedent, and what the graphic shows you is that traditionally commercial streetscape, streetscape being part of the decision that you're making, this went back 150 feet. It's not going to go back 300. You're going to double how far back it goes. And there's a lot of other commercial enterprises that, on State Street, that are empty lots or old buildings that might get torn down. I think you're studying a precedent that's just going to fundamentally change the neighborhood if you, if you, and extend that commercial streetscape. Even do commercial business, they don't necessarily have to have it saved back to commercial streetscape, State Street. And then a third point was that the bank has options. Some of those options were immediately taken off the table. I don't think they should have been, reducing size in certain role, and I've always felt that the bank has the option of building on its last open lot on State Street, on that side of State Street. They've taken that off the table, line up the corner of purchase and estate. And I suspect as part of it is, they didn't want to lose that iconic view of the bank facade coming up State Street. That's not the role of this board, to say that iconic, say your brand role in this board is to adhere to those decisions around streetscape, around transition of the neighborhood, and turn that, bring it back to the court and let the process play out. Thanks.
Seeing no one else in the room who would like to speak, I'd like to open it up to anybody remotely participating who would like to speak, they'll have to go to the court.
Thank you, Chair. The first person we have is Gary Correles, if you'd like to address the question of the board.
Hello, can you hear me? Hi, my name is Gary Correles. I own properties at 15-17, 15-17 and 19-21 Prospect Street, directly opposite the institution parking lot. I own other properties in Newbury Port and have owned property in the city since 1973. I currently live in San Diego. The proposed settlement is the same as the one that was rejected in November 9, 2021. Nothing has changed. The conditions of the proposed settlement are cosmetic in design. The abutters and the neighbors opposed to the current plan have issues which have not been addressed. The mass, the building height, noise, increased traffic, still need attention. The impact to the neighborhood is too great, as has been spelled out by residents at meetings. The planning board in March of 2021 rejected the IFS project because of its size. The vote by the board was for the best interests of the city and for which they are called upon to do their role as planning board members. They also are entrusted with preserving the historical character of the city, and I hope that the board will review why it decided what it did and let the ISF litigation resume in Land Court. Rick Tainter of the planning board said a while ago that the addition is out of context with its surroundings. The opposition of abutters and residents speaks loud and clear as to the fabric of the area. So to the planning board, I want to make my final request. Please think about all of those who have said no, the abutter, no to the existing plan, the abutters and the residents of the city. How many people have said yes? Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker we have is Charles Nutter.
Mr. Nutter, you'll have to unmute on your end as well. We'll take a pause there for a moment. Judy Morant, or I did, I don't want to mispronounce your last name. Would you like to unmute?
Judy Moradian?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Can you hear me? Can you hear me?
Yes, can you hear us?
Yeah, I can hear. I just wanted to make sure you could hear me. I want to say that I agree with everything that has been said before me, so I won't, you know, reiterate what everybody else is saying, but I would like to take a different stance. You know, increasingly, in this country, we citizens have less and less voice. Money and power, you know, it just speaks volumes. But in our, in our city of Newbury Port, I always thought we had a voice and that money and power wouldn't win out over our voices. And so I would urge the planning board to support the vote of the previous planning board and let this go to Land Court if necessary. Let, let the institution for savings take us to court. It's just wrong what they want to do, and And I think that the citizens of Newburyport have spoken loud and clear and we should listen to them. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Mr. Nutter, are you with us? Okay, Stephanie, you make a thing?
I'm sorry, what? Yes, five backstreet.
Thank you. Stephanie, are you with us?
I, I am. Stephanie, ninety three High Street. I want to be very brief. I know this has been going on for a long time. I agree with everyone who opposes this. And I've written letters myself. I especially want to point out, as Gary Correla says, that this is not just a concern for direct abutters. This has been a concern as any letters to the planning board attest of multiple residents of Newburyport. And as Judy Moradian said, that it is, and Jim Roy said in a very good letter to the planning board recently. This is about, this is about power, about money against people. And I really do hope that the planning board will stand up for the citizens of Newburyport. And let the land court. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Nutter, I'm just going to circle back again and see if you're able to address the board. Mr. Nutter, are you with us? If there's anyone else out there in our online audience who'd like to speak, please use those who'd like to raise your hand. Chair, seeing no other hands at this time, if you're in the store, maybe I think of an issue or is.
Okay. Bring it back in for deliberation. To begin, I'd like to allow Trent Costa to make any comments, like to post some things or in the public comment portion.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board here, Adam Costa. So I mean, a bit of a loss only in the sense that I didn't want to restrict my comments to your request to the matters that we had brought before you tonight. To address the outstanding concerns as in your, your June first meeting. Public comment, I've been taking furious notes and in fact, looking back to see some of what I took notes about on June first. And I didn't hear much that was different than what I heard on June first week. We have a different perspective, as you might imagine, from the, from your neighbors. We don't believe that this is a project that is vehemently or widely opposing the city. We think that it's a project that is opposed certainly by a group of neighbors who reside along the adjacent roads. Heard that at this meeting, heard at the, the June first meeting. I'm not going to get into particulars of the process except to say, because I think it's important, even though you heard it said by your council. It was also stated in the number of the correspondence from the city council, that this mediation was a voluntary process. This wasn't a process that was forced upon you by the land court judge. It certainly wasn't a process that was forced upon you and by you and the city, by the institution for savings. It was a process that was voluntary on the part of both parties to enter the discussion to see, as is often the case of living ends, that there was some common ground that could be achieved. We look closely back through your decisions, your special permit decision, denying the special permit a year and a half ago, two years ago. The site land denial from two years ago. And we looked at the basis for those denials. So we saw references not just the size, but to massing, to aesthetics and to architectural design and to those sorts of concerns. And so we made a concerted effort, we thought, through the mediation process and even preceding mediation discussions about what parameters of that mediation might be. To make, make it successful to try and address those concerns. We thought we had addressed them to a certain extent during the planning for process with our experts. But we attempted to further address those with our experts during the mediation process and bring back what to you that we thought was improved and we still think is improved. I particularly interested to hear where board members say, because we, we had much opposition points tonight. We had more of a mixed bag. Five weeks ago, and we reported that's just sort of the nature of support versus opposition. It's much more difficult to get supporters to come out meeting after meeting and it is stated the opposition to rally. But there were those in the city who spoke in support of this project back on June first. And I heard many members of the board, so much so that you instructed staff to draft these approval with conditions for your consideration tonight. Or many members of the board talking about how they, they were not on the same page, so to speak. But some of what we heard from neighbors concerning streetscape, concerning aesthetic, concerning design, concerning the appropriateness of this addition for the neighborhood and for a location, which is clearly a, a buffer of sorts between both commercial and residential uses. It's an area that is in transition from one to the other. So we heard much at the last meeting about that and overall support from many of the members who were here tonight, so much so that we're continuing on responses. So I'm curious to see whether board members continue to have those views and continue to support the project as I, as I obviously hope that they will.
To begin our deliberation, I just want to make a read to you one summarizing statement, several statements that summarize the, the decision that the planning board took in March of two thousand twenty one. And this is to focus our attention on our mandate. Our mandate tonight is to determine if the application before us eliminates or mitigates aspects of the proposed project that were denied at that time. So let me just read the summary statement high level, not going to all the details of that decision. Based on its review of the application and on the historical reports submitted by the Newburyport Historical Commission, the planning board was unable to find that the proposed project complies with the aforementioned standards and criteria. Specifically, the board found that the scale of the proposed addition would not be subordinate to the existing historic structure on the site. Disrupt the essential form and integrity of its setting within the DOD. And would be incompatible with the size, scale and character of its setting within the DOD. And therefore, the special permit could not be granted. So our job tonight is to determine if what we have heard from the applicants in this mandated application either eliminates or mitigates those issues that caused the planning board to deny this application back in March twenty twenty one. So this is the deliberation. It's a discussion among planning board members. You may comment now if you like. Just to let you know the rest of the process, we will read through the special permit decision. And at any point you want to stop and comment or discuss, we can do it at that point as well. And then we will take a vote on the special permit decision and follow in that the site land decision. Let me open it up for discussion among planning board members right now. And Attorney Lane, they're welcome to join us in the final.
I'll start. So I was actually going to read that paragraph. Thank you for reading it. So yes, the, the decision that we made in March of twenty twenty one was about size, scale, character within the DOD and within the neighborhood. And I appreciate the work that the committee working on the settlement agreement are giving. But I don't think that the, I'm sure that the points that were agreed to in the settlement do not relate at all to size, scale and character, perhaps character to a certain extent. I, I think Attorney Costa, they were just writing down some of the comments he made. And he was wondering about whether the board agreed or disagreed with the, that there was improvements dealing with streetscape, aesthetics and design. And none of those things have anything to do with what the board made his decision on March twenty twenty one. Our decision was entirely, at least, you know, to the very large degree made on the basis of size, scale, massing, relationship to the surrounding neighborhood. So I guess from my point of view, I, I can't actually agree with anything that's in the proposed draft. Draft decision. I would be happy to resubmit the decision that we made in March twenty twenty one. I don't see that anything has changed that relates to that, that decision. Now, my, my opinion is obviously not shared. My colleague voted a different way than last year and probably will vote the same way because he has a different interpretation of how, of how to interpret the application of downtown over there. But I, I guess I would just say that that's, I don't see that anything that has been done in the settlement agreement touches the reasons for the, the disapproval last year. And I think it's avoiding the issue. I think it's just looking at decoration and I think Mr. Travis mentioned cosmetics. And so that's, I guess, what I would say is that the, that the I don't see anything that has changed in the substance of what we decided last year.
Thank you. As some of you may know, and as my colleague, Ken just mentioned, there are only three members of the past planning board that voted to approve it. I was one of them. The other two are not here. And in tonight's meeting, there are four new members, four members. And in Mr. Sanders' right, I don't see my position changes. However, I am in complete agreement and harmony that the changes made are unanimous. And in fact, some might editorially say this is genuine. So I have a complete agreement that if I would have voted against it, I still would vote against it because the changes are minimal. Thank you.
So I am in agreement. I was on board previously and I vote it out in the original decision. While I think the changes are aesthetically an improvement, they don't change what I think our decision is based on, by understanding whether the project complies with the DOD. I don't think that it does due to its size, scale, mass type. The impact of those factors on store building and neighborhood. I wish we weren't here right now. I know that the DOD is being challenged as part of this limitation and I feel like that's unfortunate.
Can she be heard?
Sorry, I'm quiet. So I feel like we're in an unfortunate position. I don't relish denying a project. I think we could have gotten somewhere originally if the applicant listened to the main concerns. I feel like most of the, while there were changes and it ended up being a better project than what was initially proposed. I don't think that the changes that were made did a lot to address the factors that the board was concerned with at that time.
I'm going to keep it to this side of the room. So I, I listened to my comments at the June first hearing. And one of the new members, to be perfectly clear. And I, and I was worried that I might have misspoke or something, but I actually walked through some detail of how I felt about the massing and the compliance with the orders. And I, I would stand by those comments. I, I think I probably would have approved the application in March of last year. And maybe in a minority, we'll find out tonight, I suppose. I do want to clarify that I don't think that means I endorse the process by which we're here or any of those things. It does sound like something was broken, but I wasn't here and I can't really speak to it. By, by, just by definition, litigation is divisive and dysfunctional. So clearly something went wrong, but I don't have the luxury of really thinking about all of that process. I wish, certainly wish there was more communication and dialogue back when it happened in a more amicable manner. But, but if I'm being true, which is what I think I'm being charged to do, and I, I appreciate the council, you know, emphasizing the role of the planning board in this matter. I would support the application. I probably would support that. I'm glad it's approved. I can imagine more improvements make it even better, but I think I'm satisfied and ready to.
Can you hear me? So I, I had sat through most of the meetings. I was just absent for a couple of the initial meetings in the process, process over the last two years. So I was ineligible to vote for. I tend to agree with my colleague Dr. Walters that there are slight changes in the, in the, in the design. They're not, not large changes, fairly unanimous. However, I do think that the the addition is compatible with the existing structure. The use of materials with the brick and the copper make it to me compatible with the existing structure. I do find that it is, in my view, subordinate to the existing structure because of the distance away from the, from the historical building. So that's one of the requirements on the DOD. I have, I do have some concerns with, with the building, but I think that as far as the, the height, the height is similar to some of the other adjacent residential buildings. It's lower than some of the others on the street. I went back and walked the street stage today, walking all the way down the street, looking down Prospect. And as you walk down, you see the houses and you see the brick buildings at the far end of the street. And this would be just an extension of that, in, in my view. We're not, we're not doing anything to the existing historical building. There's no changes. There's no additions to that. No changes to that building. So a lot of the conditions of the DOD, in, in my view, are, don't, Julie, don't refer to this. It's just a few of the sections. I think that I think the addition reinforces the use of the building as the bank headquarters. I think if we look at the underlying district, it is a commercial district. And how it relates to the other structures in the DOD, I think there, there are many large brick buildings in the DOD. There's some five story buildings, four story buildings. So this is not as large as some of those, although the mass is large. I think the attempts to break up the surface to make it appear less massive with the addition of the landscaping helps that, helps to address it. So looking, looking at the condition, I think it is consistent with a lot of the DOD. So so I think those those are most of my thoughts on this. I think I'm leaning towards approving this. Those reasons, because of the underlying district being a commercial district. It's the one area where the commercial district extends closer to the houses, but the houses are adjacent to a commercial district. And that is different than a lot of the other sections of here.
I also have a new member on, on the planning board and did not participate in the process that led up to that. But I also looked at my comments from, from the last meeting and, and we talked a lot about scale. We talked a lot about the height of the street wall relative to the existing houses opposite of what the proportion of, of the street would be in the view of the. And, and it's it's hard for me to, to criticize the scale of the building at, at two stories. I've heard comments about the massive scale of the building and I have to say, I'm just not sure that I, I agree with that. The architect has made an effort to break the the footprint of the building down into a scale of separate structures that are similar in scale. To the adjacent residential buildings. I I think gestures have been made to to try to. Break down the overall massing. So so there's been a lot of subjective comments about the massive scale of this that that I have a hard time supporting. In terms of being subordinate to the historic building, I I would agree with 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 all. That distance is a big part of for me what makes this a subordinate structure. It's it's at the other end of the block from from the existing building. There is open space at at the corner of State Street. And I think that goes a long way toward mitigating the connection between the two. And and the scale is not distant. Lastly, this this is a neighborhood that that is adjacent to State Street. The primary commercial corridor in the city, and it's inevitable that the commercial character of State Street is in places where they reach back into the neighborhood. There's precedent for this a block away. Another bank has extended back into the neighborhood at a similar scale with a similar kind of massing that we are looking at here. And, you know, I think. That's kind of what happens in in border neighborhoods like this where where there are two competing uses, residential uses and commercial uses. So I I think that, given the bank's programs, given the square footage requirements. Given what could have happened here. Relative to what was allowable by zoning, I I think that there has been an effort made to try to respond to the concerns that they. So I that that's right with the overall process.
I'm also a DOR board member, and I I do hear all the comments. I think this is a really unfortunate situation that we're talking about this particular neighborhood. Because it is an overlap of residential and commercial neighborhoods. But I do believe that it's also a property owner right issue. I believe that when you're purchasing a home that's overlooking. A plot of land that may be vacant or apartment lot, that it is a fair assumption or process to go through. Prior to moving there, to assume there would be change if it's a commercial setting. I think that that's what's happening here. And and I see both sides. I I do support this project. I don't find the building to be perfect, but I do find it to be acceptable. And I do believe that in one side of the strike or the risk actually, that it is an. On this coordination because of the distance. I think that the front of the property really landscapes well the entire project. And you can state street, I think, still really highlights that front structure in its historic nature. So I am looking to support this project.
On June first, when we opened this public hearing, I made a mistake. I said that when I voted in the settlement agreement negotiation to support settlement agreement. That I was understanding that it was only to bring it back to planning board for consideration. I reread very carefully all of that agreement that I summoned. I realized that I was signing also to support acceptance of this settlement proposal. And when it came back from an application, both brain word. So I have no choice but to vote in favor of this application. I'm legally bound by that signature, and I cannot change that. All right, everybody who spoke on the planning board, so I think we should read through the decision. As I mentioned earlier, at any point. Do you want to make a comment or make a change or reiterate something that we already decided as to go into the decision, please do so. I've asked them, our board secretary to read through the decision. And she will take those from here.
So Bonnie, which one do you want me to start with?
The special permit of application.
You're going to start at the beginning, procedural history?
Let's start with existing positions in context.
Existing conditions and context. The property consists two parcels in the downtown area. Ninety-three State Street, now fourteen Lot Forty, and twelve Prospect Street, now fourteen Lot Thirty-nine. Combined property is bounded by State State Street on the northwest, Prospect Street on the northeast, Otis Place on the southeast, and five lots on southwest. Apartment is presently served by two driveways, one on State Street and one Prospect Street. Site itself is entirely within the downtown U2 business district, where dimensional requirements lack tower buildings, i.e. a forty-foot maximum of this use. But is across the street from an R3 district. Along a portion of two sides, Otis Place and Prospect Street. In simplified terms. Oh, there's a. In simplified terms, while the underlying business zoning permit permits buildings to be used to reach forty feet height, otherwise as of right. The downtown Oglee District zoning also gives further discretion to the planning board as to overall compatibility of such structures in relation to any existing structures on site. Or within the surrounding district, Eugene, that's inside. Existing structures on the ninety-three State Street lot consist of a historically eighteen-seventies structure, which is the original institution for savings building. A nineteen oh three addition to that structure, and a nineteen eighties addition attached to the brick and stone building. Twelve Prospect Street lot includes two service apartment lots separated by a circular driveway providing access to the private home. And a twenty-ten fountain and block tower corner of State and Prospect Streets. Property is within U2 Sports National Register Historic District listed in nineteen eighty-four. The original nineteen eighteen seventy bank building significant gold for its architecture and for its place in the history of the city. With the exception of another bank building across Prospect Street that beat one State Street, all buildings occupied apartments that does designated as construction structures to the National Register District. In addition, nineteen eighty, entire length Prospect Street is documented, or G as a historically significant street speed. Findings. In order to grant this special permit, board must determine that proposed new construction alteration or demolition meets all the requirements. Section twenty-seven of the report zoning ordinance downtown Oglee District. And in addition, applies from special permit criteria of subsection ten H seven of the ordinance per section twenty-seven F. DOD specific special permit criteria findings. Section twenty-seven F five A, the zoning ordinance establishes following criteria for new construction and alterations in downtown Oglee District. New construction and alterations must be compatible with existing historic buildings and structures within the DOD. New construction and alterations in the DOD shall not disrupt the essential form and integrity of. One, subject to historic building structure or exterior architectural features. Two, the lot where it's located, or three, setting within the DOD. Moreover, new construction and alteration in the DOD shall be compatible with size, scale, height, color, in paint color. Material and character of subject X historic building structure or exterior architectural feature Y, the lot where it's located, and C, setting within the DOD as the case may be. In reviewing that patient in the DOD, section twenty-seven F three A of the ordinance requires the planning board acting in special permit granting authority. To adhere to and relevant provisions of United States Secretary of the Interior Standards for Treatment of Historic Properties. Guidelines for preserving, rebuilding, restoring, and reconstructing historic buildings, including all related guidelines, patents, and other official guidance promulgated by the National Park Service. Secretary Standards. Based on its review of newly submitted plans and applications taken into consideration, historical reports previously submitted by the report historical edition. Planning board is able to find that the proposed project, as revised, applies to the DOD standards and criteria. Specifically, board found that perceived height fenestration and massing of the building that improved for adherence to the SOI guidelines. As depicted in the revised proposal, changes outlined below, which further address the planning board's expressed concerns in the prior plans. One, lowering the additions' hornet's height, as well as continuance of said hornet's height through the connector, replacing the exterior treatment for said harness cover. Two, along the additions' Prospect Street side, Central Bay will be given a recessed appearance by extending the building sides towards Prospect Street to provide an eighteen. Three, side of the addition is utilized with different color variations than the nineteen eighty addition, so as to distinguish it visually provided, however, it's the brick side of the connector shall be consistent with the nineteen eighty addition. Four, first floor at-grade windows on the additions' Prospect Street side will be compromised.
Thank you. Yes.
Of spandrel, I think, glass. Five, a revised landscape plan, including a comprehensive plan to plan Prospect Street and Otis Place, dense plantings, plant defense approximately six inches above the great side.
Excuse me, Chair. I have some comments on this section, and I don't know, would you like it now or later? When you hear this comment, I'll be making comments such that this still seems very similar in vein. Where it starts specifically, the board found that perceived height fenestration and massing of the building have been improved. I am strongly proposing that the word improve be stricken and inserted with the word modified. Just for the rest of the board's consideration, I feel so strongly in this that if this is not changed, then I hopefully will not feel that I'm stronger on the board, that I cannot approve. This this special permit.
Also, I guess the question about number four. Spandrel glass should have the modified to reflect the changes that were given to us recently.
Yeah, sorry, if I'm not mistaken, I I assumed that that was a special condition, but this necessarily alter the. The reference here to the spandrel glass, because there's still spandrel glass, correct?
Yeah, this is more of a placeholder for that, that there will be a special condition based on composing on the map looking to expand on that. So if you look at this as just referencing the first four at-grade windows. Being spandrel glass, the rest of it will be takes care of the condition. I want you to refer to have a exclamation here.
We could add Princess Lebriz's position here in or something like that.
Yeah, or 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 say, or in the alternative as as suggested by the. So something like that, just so that we're not saying here it is spandrel glass and later on say it's something else.
Okay.
So we could just reference the condition.
Yeah. Especially since it references Prospect Street in this in the word.
To Don's point. You have some suspicion about this, or does anyone disagree with him?
I agree with it.
The last sentence could read, if everybody agrees with Don, and I want to make sure this is agreeable to everybody or finding another word. Specifically, the board found that the perceived height fenestration and massing of the building have been modified for he runs to the Secretary of the interior's guidelines. A lot of words, everybody? We'll change that. Anything else at this point?
No, I'm sorry.
Okay, would you please?
In making these findings, the board evaluated the proposed projects against relevant provisions of Secretary Standards and related official guidance as follows. One, new additions to historic buildings, size, scale, and massing, new addition all contained to the conditions of overall volume and three-dimensional qualities. Board found that perceived height fenestration and massing in the building has been improved with the revised proposal, including changes such as lowering the additions' hornet's height. Recessing the central bay along the additions' Prospect Street side, utilization of different brick color variations, use of spandrel glass. First floor at-grade windows on the additions' Prospect Street side, and revised landscape plan to include functions of planting plan along Prospect Street and Otis Place. The above five proposed design changes visually mitigate height and massing, the addition in relationship to the existing historic structure on the property. And to the nearby residential structures. Therefore, the addition does not detract from historic character of the district and appears to be subordinate to the existing historic structure.
So this first one, clearly it would be true throughout, we agree with Don, that anytime that particular statement about. High fenestration, massing of the building have been approved or changed to modify. But if there's anything else you want to add here on any of these, please do so now.
Thank you. I'd like to also. Post for my fellow board members, the following change in paragraph number one. The last sentence starts, the above five proposed line change visually mitigate height massing and the addition. In addition, in relation to existing historic structures on the property and nearby residential structure. Therefore, the addition does not detract from historic character, et cetera, et cetera. I am proposing to delete the following. It says after the. I am proposing to delete the following phrase, above five proposed sign change visually mitigate. Height massing of the of the addition in relationship to the existing historic structure on the property and to nearby resident structures. Therefore. So what I'm proposing at the end of certain last of the reading is follows. The addition does not detract from historic character of the district and appears to be supportive into the existing historic structure. Again, the reason for my change in this, that in my opinion, this change in this sentence would indicate that there was some, you know. Modification and improvement, and again, as I said before, not through. Anyone's deliberate action, but I think it's it's disingenuous and we should simply state the facts without necessarily opinion on this thing.
Other comments on Don's proposed change? Difference. Reading of this to delete those details, just. Include a final portion of that sentence. Addition does not detract from historic character of the district and appears to be subordinate to the existing historic structure. Go with that?
Make changes.
Aggress.
Yeah, correct. Number two, depending on its location, it may be possible that an addition slightly taller or slightly larger historic building may be acceptable as long as it is visually subordinate to the historic building. Post addition is larger than the historic structure, but is also separated from the historic structure a reasonable distance from the nineteen eighties addition. After review of the revised plans on pre-stand, planning board found the larger addition acceptable, perceived height fenestration and massing of the revised proposal. Are more consistent with the SOI standards, including changes such as lowering additions' hornet's height, recessing the central bay along the additions' Prospect Street side. Utilization of different brick color variations, use of spandrel glass, first floor at-grade windows on the additions' Prospect Street side, and revised landscape plan to include functions of planting plan along Prospect Street and Otis Place. Planning board found those design changes lessens the perception of building mass and its impact on historic building, and those changes contribute to the addition appearing visually subordinate to historic. Planning Board found proposed design changes lessen the perception of building mass and its impact on historic building, and those changes contribute to the addition appearing visually subordinate to historic building. The addition is located to the rear of the parcel and is connected to other later addition to the original historic structure, thereby reducing the impact of its size on the whole of the parcel. The above five proposed design changes contribute to the appearance of subordination.
I'm not too many of these that, again, my appreciation, you know, you might tell the Board members, this goes to the sentence that says second to the last sentence, the third to the last sentence, it begins, "Planning Board found that proposed design changes lessen the perception of the building mass, et cetera, et cetera." Issue I have with the word is lessened. I think there's been some agreement that they extend the minimus changes on that. And I surely would value any other, or, on my members, because I actually did use the word somewhat less, and then I think that introduces subjectiveness into this decision. And so I'm hoping whatever you can come up with, something better for that, so that sentence there. I was okay in the second to the last sentence, but again, I'd be value the input from any of you where it says the addition is located to the rear of the parcel and is connected to another label location historic structure, thereby reducing the size of the parcel. I'm sorry, it's less, "Above five proposed changes contribute to the appearance of subordination," it used the word contribute, so I was okay with that, but again, I simply throw out, if any of you have any other suggestions on that section, I'd welcome.
I just have a question as to whether in this case, repeating all five changes is, makes sense, because again, I'm probably not voting for this, but the idea of different, different brick color variations, use of spandrel glass on the first floor at-grade windows and a landscape plan, whether any of those have anything to do with making it subordinate. It seems like they're, they deal with other things other than subordination, so I, I almost suggest that you, yeah. This would be for those who support this, but I'd almost suggest that limiting this to lowering the addition's cornice height and recessing the central bay might be the two items to put anything to this subordination.
I'm sorry, thank you, just to the Chair, I just want to make sure I'm clear on whether I'll edit it or not, except the language. I would agree with Frank comments to narrow the narrative of this particular section, because I do agree with those items necessarily contribute or are relevant to the historic, making it supportive of historic building. Type of color brick really does change something supportive, really for the mass issue or disposition.
Problems with eliminating those other elements in that sense. Back to Don's first question, we have a problem, do you have, were you saying that the statement of the planning board found that proposed design changes lessen the perception of building mass, you wanted to change the word lessen?
Yes.
Reduced, would reduce for? Reduce the perception of building mass and it's
I guess the issue that I have
Or is it just something bigger than that?
The issue that I have is I don't think these changes have made any impact on it. That's where, that's where you know, I'm suggesting some, some form of a change there.
So Don, what about just saying, the planning board found that the addition appears visually subordinate to the historic building?
Yes, that would be okay with me.
Strike out and then make strike the last sentence of that paragraph of the above five proposed design changes.
No, I appreciate, I was looking for some of that section, thank you. Yeah.
Keep it first.
No, I, I I, I, my preference would be to delete it and just keep it minimally as you had suggested that. Again, I think the word contribute provides some it's the devilous, I think. Or at least pretended to be.
Okay, okay, number three, number three. New additions in densely built apartments, height and setback from the street should generally be consistent with those of historic building and other surrounding buildings in the district. The facade of the proposed addition is broken into elements that attempt to give the impression of separate buildings. The Board found that the scale of these elements, perceived height, penetration, and massing of the building that improved through the revised proposal, including changes such as lowering the addition's cornice height, recessing the central bay along the additions' prospect street side, utilization of different brick color variations, use of spandrel glass on the first floor at-grade windows on the additions' prospect street side, revised landscape plan to include comprehensive planting plan along Prospect Street and all this place, soften support edges of the project complements the abutting residential neighborhood and respects the context of the abutting structures. The above five proposed design changes contribute to the visual variety in the neighborhood while providing similar height structures on the sides of Prospect Street. Good work.
Same as before, I would suggest in the third line, revising the word improved to modified. We're changing it, we're modifying. And I would then also, further down where it says revised landscape plan, including, et cetera, et cetera. And it says soften support edges to the project. I just wanted to throw that out, I'm okay with that, if the rest of the planning board is, I'm not necessarily the guru in architecture and landscape of architecture, no, so that you are more adept in that area than I am, so I'm going to defer that, please. And then the very last sentence, I think what I would suggest is what that did suggest, just deleting that section, you know, just the word. I'm sorry, I just want you to be able to make, wasn't able to move the last sentence back. I'm trying to follow where oh, you know, my other question was the word softens, but if you all think those changes do, then I was okay with that, I just wanted to throw it out to see what the rest of you brought on that. So, okay.
Number four, new exterior additions, three fourteen. The historic buildings existing in portions site and setting help to find the general parameters for enlargement, assess relationship between actual size and relative scale. The addition is supposed to be constructed along Prospect Street and all this place facing historic residential buildings. The project setting is thus characterized by domestic scale buildings, but also as part of the B two SOI district, where commercial buildings are prevalent in general larger. The Board found that perceived height, penetration, and massing of the building have been improved through the revised proposal, including changes such as lowering the addition's cornice height, assessing the central bay along the additions' prospect street side, utilization of different brick color variations, use of spandrel glass on the first floor at-grade windows on the additions' prospect street side, and revised landscape plan to include a comprehensive planting plan along Prospect Street and all this place. These improvements present streetscape that is more reflective, consistent with that created by abutting structures along Prospect Street and all this place.
Two changes there, I may suggest one is, again, changing where it's going to modify. And further down, it has these improvements present, I guess I would, I guess I am proposing to use the word modify.
Number five, rehabilitation SOI standard number nine. New additions, exterior alterations for related construction. New work should be differentiated from the old, which should be compatible with the massing size, scale, and architectural features to protect from historic integrity of the property and its environment. The Board found the new addition design has been improved through the revised proposal, including changes such as lowering the addition's cornice height, recessing the central bay along the additions' prospect street side, utilization of different brick color variations, use of spandrel glass on the first floor at-grade windows on the additions' prospect street side. These design improvements work together to differentiate old from new in a whole manner, which reflects the historic integrity of the property and its environment.
Similarly, I would suggest revising the word improved, first line to modify. And secondly, in the last sentence, I would suggest using the word design improvements to design revisions.
Is that provisions better?
I don't, yeah, I was trying to be Shouldn't I should have my, sorry.
Do we want to keep it consistent or do we want to make it exciting? Unless there's a legal reason not to. Number six. New construction within the boundaries of historic properties and yes, technical preservation service, protecting the historic setting in context of a property when the trade of open space and building density must always be considered in planning construction on historic site. The Board found that the revisions to the plans recognize and respond to the context of the property. The Board found that perceived height, penetration, and massing of the building were primary concerns of earlier plans, but then brought more in line with the SOI standards the revised proposal, and then the revised landscape plan, including comprehensive planting plan along Prospect Street and all this place helps to protect and respect historic setting of the property. The revised plans also preserve an area of open space, AKA a park alongside and adjacent to all this place, which was and is the consequence of project provisions made by the
My suggestion is the third line. Second sentence, where it says, "Which were primary concerns of earlier plans have been brought more in line with the SOI standards." Again, to me, this would seem to indicate that these changes have made some type of, have made their closer to the SOI standard than I don't think. That's the case, so because, in this case, I'm voting the affirmative, I would have just said, we should probably to meet the SOI. Because my next is what I have brought more in line, because I don't think that they have more in line, because they're significant changes. I'll give you another thoughts on this one. Is that, I'm sorry, is that replacing with beats or now beats? That would be fine, so, for me, that probably is better than you.
Number seven, new additions in densely built environments brief the least impact on historic building in the district. Planning Board found that since the addition will be on site with an existing historic structure, the addition should contribute to preserving the image of that historic structure, not to track from it. Planning Board found, while the addition was larger than the historic structure, it was located some distance away off the lot, and the perceived height, penetration, and massing of the building have been improved through the revised proposal, including changes such as lowering the addition's cornice height, assessing the central bay along the additions' prospect street side, utilization of different brick color variations, use of spandrel glass on the first floor at-grade windows on the additions' prospect street side. The planning board found those additions located located in a way that has the least impact on historic building, but still respective. Done. Have that approved, first.
I'm looking for the word right now, I'm sorry, I missed the sentence.
Yes. Where do I, like, sit there?
Okay, okay, I'll just, yeah. Yes, thank you. Or me, sorry, is that revised or is that modified?
Planning Board found that the proposed project does meet the downtown whole plate district U M D standards for new construction and alteration, as the proposed project is compatible with size, scale, height, and character of the original institution, same as historic structure, a lot where it is to be located and setting that D O T.
I have a question. It seems very strong statement. And I'm wondering if it makes sense, and I may be totally off on this, but I wonder if it makes sense to say planning board found that the proposed project does not mean, does mean, so the D O D standards for new construction alteration as the proposed project gives the impression of being compatible with the size, scale, would that be too mushy? I know that's not a legal term, but would that be legally tenable? Gives the impression that, rather than just saying
It opens that to significant questions.
It does, that's what I thought.
With potential.
So I think we have to be more direct, that's what the stuff which, the current message is.
Just pointing out the actual phrase that the, that finding reflects the language of the requirement that new construction operations must be compatible.
Yeah, we have to use the language of the ordinance. Okay, I just thought I'd try it. Would you want to say something?
General special permit findings. In addition to the specific criteria and findings from the D O D special permit, the planning board must also determine that the proposed project meets the criteria for all special permits as provided in section ten page seven of SOI ordinance. For the purposes of the D O D special permit, planning board includes requested use, is the construction of an addition to the existing building, rather than any of the specific uses that are listed in section five D and described in section five E. It is important to note that the existing and proposed uses of office or retail bank, which are allowed by right in the B two SOI district, are not subject of this application. The general special permit criteria in section ten H seven of the N C O, and for its project specific findings for each are as follows. One, the new request was listed in table whose regulations or elsewhere as in the ordinance, it's requiring district for which application is made or is similar in parent heritage and committed uses in a particular district, but it's not specifically mentioned. The requested use is construction of addition to an existing building downtown of the district. Section twenty seventy of the ordinance defines a term alteration to include any addition. Section twenty seven F states that all construction alteration, example Section 27F states that all construction alteration, demolition within the DOD shall require the owner of the relevant property to submit an application for a DOD special permit. Thus, the requested use is specifically listed in the ordinance as required for special permit. Two, the requested use is essential and or desirable to the public convenience center or welfare. The requested use, instruction of an addition to an existing commercial building would be desirable to the public convenience by allowing for an expansion of business use in downtown business district. Great. The requested use will not create undue traffic congestion or undue air pedestrian safety. Applicants submitted a report by a professional traffic engineer, May 13, 2020, which projected that this project would generate 80 additional turns up to the weekday, including 13 new turns at morning peak hour and 12 in the afternoon hours. The report included that increases are negligible and all within the daily fluctuation of traffic are therefore not expected to have an operational effect on area streets. The proposed project would provide the number of parking spaces required where the NCO of the site would use so-called stacked parking, no off-site parking impacts are anticipated. Staggered employee shifts will minimize remaining doing to the extent that it occurs, the applicants submitted a plan showing that the vehicle doing the property of the site. Number four, the requested use is not over limited with water drainage sewer system or any other municipal system to such an extent that the requested use or any developed use in the immediate area or in any other area of the city will be unduly subjected to hazards, effective health, safety or the general welfare. The requested use is not over limited with water drainage or sewer system or any other municipal system. Five, any special regulations for the use set forth in special permit table 1111, there are no special regulations for proposed use. Six, the requested use will not impair the integrity or character of the district or adjoining districts or be documented to the public welfare. The planning board found that this project would not impair the integrity and character of the downtown public district. Board found that perceived height penetrations and massing of the building that improved through the revised proposal, including changes such as lowering the addition's corner site, assessing the center bay along the addition's prospects street side, utilization of different brick color variations, use of spandrel glass on the first floor accurate windows on the addition's prospects street side, and revised landscape plan to include the maintenance of the planning plan along Prospect Street that holds place. Number seven.
For the record, we're, 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 forgive you, preemptively assuming. This is my last, this is my, this is my last comment on this question. I'll be fine the rest of your reading then.
Number seven, the requested use will not, by its addition to the neighborhood, cause an access to that particular use that could be documented to the character of said nature. The proposed use will not cause an access to that particular use that could be documented to the character of said nature. Number eight, the proposed use is imperative of the purpose intended for this ordinance. The proposed use, instruction of the proposed addition in downtown public district is imperative of the purpose of the ordinance as expressed in sections 27B, 27F, 3D and 27M5. Nine, proposed use shall not be conducted in a manner so as to admit any dangerous, noxious, injurious or otherwise objectionable fire explosion, radioactive or other master points, vibrations, smoke, dust or other form of care. The proposed use will permit the banking use of the existing buildings to be extended and therefore would not generate any dangerous, noxious, injurious or other objectionable fire explosion, radioactive or other master points or vibrations, smoke, dust, odor or other form of care.
Okay, standard conditions. I'd like to jump, because they are standard, I'd like to jump to number three where there was a question and discuss that that has to do with modifications to approved plans. Andy, I think this is yours, so I'd like you to stick to it, please.
Sure, so those who were board members, I have a recent time because of attorney cost to spoken this very official part of the meeting, but it's not intangible for projects of any sort to maybe need some tweaks after the initial approval by boards. And so one way that both the planning board and the CPA have a recent time, been looking to impress those, it's rather having every item come before the planning board. Some lower level or smaller scale adjustments in plans, you know, and don't necessarily warrant fourth time, are addressed by a staff over the view of approval to determine whether it's consistent with the board's approval here. Give the staff any question about that, believe that it's, there's any question of being inconsistent or more of a more substantial nature, that would be forwarded to the board, in this case, the planning board for review, rather than something that could refer you to the staff level as, as a rule or consistent with critical decision. So the question we had here was just given the, the nature of this project, the basis I had about it was whether or not you want to move along with language and things like that. Or if you wanted, I think it may be one of the reasons in recent years I can recall, board didn't want to to vary the sort of the language required everything to come back. I'm not suggesting that we have any special thing here for that provision, I just wanted to ask that question for clarity, so.
So I had, because this is such a tight site and because every inch counts, I was concerned about leaving this as open as it is. And I had submitted to Andy some, unfortunately today, some draft language that I would add at the end of the week. So notwithstanding previous statements, the placement of any exterior equipment that is not shown in the new site plan, including but not limited to transformers generators, HVAC equipment, and similar equipment, whether mounted on the ground or the building, shall constitute a major modification required, required by the planning board. I just feel that if you add anything on the ground, you're losing landscaping and that's, so that is going to directly impact the neighborhood. And I'm also concerned, and we had statements given to us about the HVAC equipment or the roof mounted equipment being enclosed. I just wanted to make sure that anything that changed that, that changed the appearance of the building from, from the bottom to the side, would also be considered to be a, a, a major modification. So other than that, I, I don't have other concerns about that standard condition. But I do think that anything that is added to the site or the building that is, that is a piece of equipment that may cause, it may remove landscaping or may add any noise or anything, should be considered a major modification coming across.
So I understand that as being the official sentence added at the end of the conditions.
Yes.
I just have one clarification. I mentioned, you know, do you want it right now as a mission or do you want to come back to the board and in turn the board would make a decision whether it's not a major?
I actually think that it's, it's very likely to be something that residents are going to want to try to know, so I think you should be convinced of this.
So other than that, there were no other, are there any other comments on standard conditions before those special conditions? Don, you good with that?
Yes, yes.
Let's check. So let's go to the special conditions and read what are here and I believe you wanted to include these comments on major modification for one or two years as well. There's some reference to that at the bottom of your, to Andy.
I, I just didn't have a way to, to change that, I just, it's just the special conditions being adjusted to be consistent with the language as well. So number one and number two, maybe just in some places.
Understood, yeah, we can treat those to be consistent with the language.
Okay, so that would be just really the last they are. In addition to the formal and standard conditions, the planning board's reversion approvals subject to special conditions stated below. One, as represented by the applicant during public hearing, no utilities, HVAC or other technical equipment shall be located above the exposed roof line other than minimal vents and similar small scale elements required for proper function of such equipment. Otherwise, all such equipment shall, as represented by the applicant's architect, be placed within and under the roof or so as to visually hide their appearance to aquatic properties and the public realm. In order to ensure consistency with this condition, the applicant shall obtain approval from the director of planning and development and zoning administration, administrator to confirm the proposed location of advanced equipment related attachments are consistent with this permit and proposed plans before submission for any building permits for this project. Number two, all site level utility equipment, heat transformers, gas meters, etc., shall be sighted and screened so as to reduce their potential for adverse impact on historic and architectural character of building site and adjacent properties and street spaces. In order to ensure consistency with this condition, the applicant shall obtain approval from the director of planning and development and zoning administrator to confirm that any such equipment location screening is consistent with this permit, those plans before submission for any building permits obtained from this project. And no such installations shall proceed without written approval of such details by the director of planning and development and zoning administrator, irrespective of whether or not building permit is required for any such site level to the requirement. Great. All utility interconnections from an electric, gas, water, sewer, telephone, internet or other utility service to a building and property, including but not limited to meters, transformers, switches, cabinets and similar equipment, shall be located indoors and any conduits thereto thereafter shall extend underground from the street to the indoor location. If the applicable utility provider slash vendor documents in writing why it's not possible to provide such interconnection in an indoor location and such interconnection may be externally located with permanent screen from all public rights to way, including neighborhood residences. Such locations and screening details to be consistent here with, shall be reviewed and approved by the director of planning and zoning administrator prior to the start of construction.
There's just one typo there, should be rights of way, not right of ways. Anything, anything of substance on this one?
Number four, the applicant shall, prior to the commencement of construction, obtain written approval from the director of planning and development and zoning administrator that the materials proposed for the finishes and exterior object are consistent, little made by the applicant, that are classification materials to be used as referenced above.
So there should be a, oh, and do you want to have something on that? Because that's where we have the other conditions.
Oh, sure, Chair, I was just asking for point of clarification to it first, really with respect to Mr. Chambers' comment back on standard condition three, that language proposed relative to utility connections. I'm just confirming that that same language is going to be added to special condition one to the end, or are you going to hold it substance of special condition one? It's still going to say, say what it says, or we're going to add to the end of it, that language indicates that that will be considered anything. Any addition of utility apartments is different than what's shown on your food plant will be made to major modification and require approval. To, to your second point, Chair, with respect to that, four, your only comment would be an adjustment for classification of materials to be used with regard to the, the windows specifically. Yeah, we were going to do SDLs, do with the external clip on, we refer to them as wood, wood windows that snap in volume grid.
So you're going to just add that into number four, it's not, we, we approved it as a separate condition, so I think it might be more friendly to just keep them.
That's fine.
So there'll be two, two more special permit conditions. One is the simulated light and the other is windows and shadow locks according to your submitted
Sorry, I just got a chair, new chair, just a question earlier on, this discussion of submitting materials later date, is that, to make sure I understand, is that something being added or, I'm just understanding.
That had to do with pre- pre-construction, but I thought it was covered in the list of materials in that, in that sedition.
Yes, I wasn't sure what the suggestion I thought was it something else, I had to go back to board later, I just want to make sure, how do you like this here?
Did you know what I'm referencing, these two?
Yes, yes, thank you.
That is the special permit decision amended. I have a motion to approve this special permit. Don and Alden. Any further? Any further discussion at this point? All right, we need six votes to approve in order, in the affirmative to grant this decision. Alden?
Yes.
Yeah?
Yeah.
Jamie?
Yes.
Heather?
Yes.
Rick?
No.
Don?
Yes.
Bonnie?
Yes.
So we have six votes and special comments for. Have to go through the similar process for the site plan review, there's a lot of overlap. I want to make it as efficient as possible. And see how we can get, oh, one thing I forgot, the dates on both of these have to be changed to June 22nd.
Yes, thank you, we'll take care of that, thank you.
Okay, just site plan review.
Chair, just, so, so there's not another oversight, maybe it's not just me being cautious, but Mr. Port was also going to add page three of the special permit decision. That referenced the option, it was option four, something top or downs.
Yes, thank you, yeah, there was an agreement earlier today.
Thank you. All right, let's see how we move this forward. Well, there, there's. Well, in the plans and documents, I jump down there, it's exactly what attorney cost just referred to, the same option four for the copper and flashet connected mobile documents. Forty, let's see. Existing conditions and context is the same as the prior decision. We should do, I think it's a different category, so there's going to be overlap, but I'm sorry to say we do have to be the findings stopping against the standard conditions.
Findings, in order to grant site plan approval, the board must determine if applicant's project complies with site plan review criteria set forth in section 15G of the NCO's zoning ordinance and with the development and format standards provided in section 15H of the NCO. These criteria, standards and boards project specific findings for each are noted below. Site plan review criteria, community character. Section 15GA of the NCO requires better proposed development. One, minimizes obstruction of scene views from publicly accessible locations. Two, minimizes impacts to important natural or historical features. Three, spreads objectionable whole features such as large plank walls, open dumpster, clothing or storage areas on neighboring properties and roadways. Four, is inferring with architectural style of adjacent buildings in the immediate neighborhood. Five, if located within the national historic district, is consistent with architectural style, scale, density, massing and setbacks in the district. Six, promotes design and architectural consistency regarding the architectural value and significance of the site, building or structure, the general design, arrangement and texture, materials and color of the features involved in the relation of each feature to similar features of building and structures in the immediate neighborhood and surrounding area. Seven is appropriate in regards to size and shape of the buildings or structures in relation to the land area on which the building and structure is situated and to the adjacent buildings and structures within it. Planning board's deliberations regarding the proposed project are too focused on issues that trust, whether of criteria contained to coordinate consistency with the surrounding neighborhood. Number four and number seven, due to the scale and design of the addition compared to the adjacent presidential structures. The applicant modified the proposed expansion plan several times during the course of the planning board's 2020 to 2021 few process to address city department, planning board, historical permission and community comments and concerns, particularly with respect to size, scale and massing. few processed to address city department's any more historical permission and community comments and concerns, particularly with respect to size, scale, and massing. That's been further revised on demand. The board found that perceived height, demonstration, and massing of the building have been improved with the revised proposal, which includes changes such as lowering the addition's corner site, assessing the central bay along the addition's prospect street side, utilization of different brick color variations, use of spandrel glass, first floor acrid windows, addition's prospect street side, and revised landscape plan to include a comprehensive planting plan along Prospect Street in its place. Thus, the planning board found that these new changes that proposed was in harmony with and minimized impact on important historical features on site or in its surroundings.
Right. One comment is revising or. Beginning of section here. That's the, check last paragraph, the second line says administration has to have been approved, suggests were approved and certainly modified.
Do you want to keep up with these new changes part in the last sentence?
I just.
I, I, I thought that was okay, but.
It's up to you, Mark. Just.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay. As set forth in the decision of this board made and filed together with the instant decision, the board noted to approve the special permit required for the project, so went to section twenty seven, zoning ordinance. Traffic parking and public access. Parking on site lies with the NCO. The applicant goes sixty-two parking spaces as part of the proposed project by using an automated parking system. Project applies with site and review criteria by minimizing the impur traffic and safety impacts, maximizing convenience and safety of the popular bicycle and pedestrian movement within the neighborhood and site and minimizes adverse impacts. Health. The project does not involve any substantial noise, vibration, gas, fumes, odor, dust, or other objectionable features. Appropriate screening for the proposed generators has been provided to minimize potential disruptive noise, noise generated by the parking system maintained within the structure. Public services and utilities. The proposed work will not overload any public water drainage or sewer system or any other municipal systems. The project will be serviced by the utilities that serve these systems to build it. The city's Department of Public Services signed off on those project plans. It's shown in the stormwater report, there will be no additional runoff to the site along stormwater will be between the on-site. The planning board's peer review were bound to the engineering, drainage, design, and analysis of the factors presented. Land use planning. Criteria, this criteria requires an assessment of a project for consistency with the Land Use School's city's master plan. The proposal is consistent with the Land Use School, LEV one of twenty seventeen master plan. Maintained in downtown school as a city's civic, service, commercial, and cultural center. Stated by the applicant, the proposed project would support an expansion of banking activity in downtown. Master plan also addresses preservation of neighborhood character, stated in Land Use School, LEV four. Preserve the character of the city's neighborhoods while encouraging a diverse housing stock. As described above, a community character of board found that perceived height fluctuations and massing of the building have been improved with the revised proposal, including changes such as lowering the addition's corner site, assessing the central bay along addition's prospect street side, utilization of different brick color variations, use of spandrel glass. In the first floor acrid windows, addition's prospect street side and revised landscape plan to include a comprehensive planting plan along Prospect Street in its place. The reported historic character is a fundamental concern of the planning board as its interior, its roads, balance, and networks, historic development patterns. Project was able to obtain the required special permit and thus support the performance of this criteria.
Just changing the word to modify. That it's the. Six, seven, one. Eight, nine, nine.
Go back up.
Yeah, sir. Yes.
Board found a perceived height.
Yeah, the third, the third, there you go. Thank you.
Open space and internal protection. There is existing landscape throughout the property. No change in landscape in open spaces proposed proportion of the property closes to state streets. A revised landscape plan has now been submitted to include a comprehensive planting plan along Prospect Street and all its place in downtown. That's across six, seven, about the break cycle.
Above, up, should be above.
Yes.
Above.
Performance standards. The proposed project represents an expansion of the existing bank office use in downtown business district, which is fully developed and served by all municipal and private utilities. As a result, performance standards related to industrial and particular access and traffic impacts, lighting, landscape, stormwater runoff, water quality, wetlands, erosion control, environmental utilities are not a concern. Words project specific findings relate to site plan and architectural design, including architectural character. Fifteen H.
Why is there a colon there at the end? Is that part of what's coming next or not?
No, I think that's. Oh, yeah. No, I see what you're saying. Yeah.
It is related to the next two.
So like I said earlier, these are coming out anywhere it's.
Okay, so you want to leave colon there. Okay.
Fifteen H, site plan and architectural design. The board found that perceived height fluctuations and massing of building have been improved with the revised proposal, including changes such as lowering the addition's corner site, assessing the central bay along addition's prospect street side, utilization of different brick color variations, use of spandrel glass at first floor acrid windows on addition's prospect street side, and revised landscape plan to include a comprehensive planting plan along Prospect Street and all its place. Board was able to find a height and volume for massing of the proposed project, showing that reference to revised plans is compatible with the existing historic structure of parcel and would be bonding for nearby storage residential.
Question is the second line.
Fifteen H, seven, general architectural character. The applicant, the applicant presented several architectural designs for the proposed addition, including designs that attempted to respond to the surrounding residential buildings as well as commercial architecture. The board found that perceived height fluctuations and massing of the building have been improved with the revised proposal, including changes such as lowering the addition's corner site, assessing the central bay along addition's prospect street side, utilization of different brick color variations, use of spandrel glass at first floor acrid windows on addition's prospect street side, and revised landscape plan to include a comprehensive planting plan along Prospect Street in its place. Board found that building design compatible with the vernacular structures, historic character, and scale of buildings in the surrounding neighborhood as is required by section fifteen H, seven.
My last comment, line four. About change. To. That's the last comment.
Madam Chair, if I could just offer additional verification, assist with the special permit decision. There are references throughout these findings. I have to forward them to spandrel brass, which there was before. So I just suggest that Mr. Pork take a similar revision, say stating something like, except those otherwise provided in the list of materials, given that we're adjusting those first floor windows, why choose the size of the building, but the shadow was the span of that. Thank you.
Current conditions are standard. Rick wants to say something?
I would just like to make the same change to standard condition number three is related to the site plan, special permit, standard condition, and then to go to the special conditions.
Are these conditions all the same as the ones in special permit?
They might be wanting to adjust this just because of. Yeah.
Are you looking to read them?
I don't have the standard ones, in my opinion, though.
No, not the standard ones, special.
Yeah.
How are the special?
Uh, yeah, these are basically the same as it's a previous one, so.
No, but we want to make sure we add the, so that we're adding the special present.
Right, as long as that's clear of the record.
Have you read them yourself? Is there any reason to read them out loud?
These special conditions provide, right, consistent with the special permit.
I'll take a motion to approve the second one again.
Oh. I move to approve as amended.
Second?
Not second.
Oh, roll. Alden?
Yes.
Yeah?
No.
Bob?
Yes.
Jamie?
Yes.
Heather?
Yes.
Rick?
No.
Don?
Yes.
Bonnie, yes. So site plan review is also approved. I officially close this public here.
I just remembered, we did clarify, we made the motion second.
Don and Alden.
My thank you. Thank you specifically, Madam Chair, for your participation in the mediation process, as well as in the series of hearings. Previously, I would thank all the board members for their time. Certainly appreciate that this was contentious remand, the contentious hearing process, and, you know, challenging to each of your, ways. So I appreciate the time and the effort, but just honestly appreciate the, thank you.
We're gonna take a stretch break unless you actually have to leave the room. I'll just have a stretch break. It has to, I know you have to scroll that, and then you have the other edge of this, it's sort of a simple stage.
I hesitate to, let's start doing deliberations.
Would affect the table, open conversation tomorrow. Oh, yeah. I was going to just take the document, see if anybody wants to make adjustments to what they said before. I remember. Mine.
Yeah. So sometimes it's like, they send out a staff report, calling it a link in staff report, not a risk.
There's a lot of things really mixed around.
Yeah, I was, you were right there. Sure tired now, right? It's just. I guess we're both.
Yeah. What is the?
It's about. It's the beginning, it's just where it goes.
Yeah.
I better do it in pictures and images.
Just really. I think a lot of time.
Yeah.
That's right. That's the.
So this.
Start it off.
I don't.
Why I think a lot of this stuff?
I mean, not that.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Yes. Yeah.
Yeah.
Very much.
I mean, I don't really.
No, we can touch.
Okay.
Yeah.
It's a, that's.
Yes. But I just.
I didn't realize.
But, yeah.
Yeah.
Where you go. Nice work.
Six. That's. I don't know. It's what I'm first time. To hear it, yeah, to start.
Somebody has.
Yeah. Back, yeah. I think we have. Your expertise.
Just when, uh. You guess what? Uh, you might want to.
We try this, I try not to work.
Well, most. There's no, but also.
You'll still be. Well, you probably know, so.
Yeah.
Under protest.
Yeah. Signed under protest.
Well, I mean, China's. This is all the line is awesome.
Uh, it will probably be tomorrow, I would say. Or they're at.
Yeah. Yeah. All right. I thought all the words into this.
So.
Keep seeing, counting on this creative. That was before I started at the pouch.
You want to say.
Twenty.
Yeah. Uh, oh, yeah.
It doesn't, it doesn't have like.
But he does. That hurt.
Just want to make sure that all they do.
Yeah.
That works. Yeah.
So I have to speak in the list for the recording or not?
It's just amplified reality.
All right, um. We're at the general business portion of our agenda. Um, short-term rentals review of our planning board recommendations. I was going to take our recommendations from April 6th. And see if anybody wanted to make any changes based on the public hearing that we went through on the second, the next version, the last, most recent version of the short-term rental proposal. And the first section of this has to do with owner occupancy requirements. And, uh, what we originally had said was we were, or, um. Five members of the board supported the recommendation, and there were two minority opinions. So the recommendation was that we supported allowing existing investor out of short-term rentals on the mainland to continue to authorize by special permit from the zoning board. I don't believe there's a special permit in the current proposal. So, uh, that's something to consider. And there were three conditions that the, um, you know, use must have been registered with the state as of August 30th of 2021. That date should probably change to when this version of the amendment was used to cancel. But that would be an obvious change there for the whole of this condition. He said these three conditions. Um.
So this is a, this is our report just for people. So is there a different, substantially different version from? Who was being changed there? I guess there is a thing.
Yeah, there's a reason for that because I was reading, um, going by the Salem ordinance and may suggest safe putting there, uh, registered by the date that the ordinance was moving to the council for consideration.
I mean, if I'm not mistaken, I think what the chair is getting at is that the most recent advertisement of the hearing is what she's, uh, suggesting use as opposed to, um, you know, some other prior day.
Date of the new.
The date of the new advertising area, yeah.
Advertising, yeah. I'm not making sense to catch me, but you guys got to be more aware than me to get. All right, um, the use must strictly comply with all requirements of the ordinance, including the off-street parking requirements. And third, the special permit, well, there that goes again, shall only apply to the current property. So the, if we say that it's, um, not authorized by special permit, then they have to be approved for a license that may cover it.
I think this is, no, I think this, what we're recommending is a new special, right? This is not, this is not something in the ordinance is saying it should be, should be moved as a new special, they were recommending that new special be created to, um, to allow these things to continue. So I think the word special permit still makes sense.
Saying that every one of the nine or however many are registered, if they wanted to apply for a license, they would have to go into the, send more of those, um, special permit?
That's what, that's why our recommendation was, I think, I'm going to stick with it. I don't, I don't see a reason to change it, but maybe I'm.
I do.
I.
I'll let them say it.
Actually, I, I, I don't see a reason to change. The only thing that I will say is that you keep on moving these dates further and further, there is a potential for more and more people to be registered. And so therefore, if there was a concern for the ZBA, that's 50 mile, or perhaps now it's 79 or 89. So that's the one thing I would say I believe if I'm being respectful.
I believe that there are not going to be anywhere near, nearly close to 50 because, can we roll that back up to the, the privates? So it has to, any STRUs has to comply with all requirements of the ordinance, including off-street parking requirements. So this implies that all those two, you know, I think if we look at those 55 units, we probably will see 10 that have enough parking. So, so there are only 10 that are eligible to apply for a special permit. And that's my, that's my top of the head, but certainly not 55.
Is there still a high street special permit or the, the ZBA is, they take that out?
They have it out right now.
Their, that's, the council has left it in there. That's, we, she still has the high street.
I was picturing it was a little similar.
Take it out and then add it back in.
So I was thinking the process, they've kept the process for that. So this will be the process.
Yeah, I'm not trying to create special permit. If they just apply for a license, even though the criteria, why would they have to give special permit? It's because they're unoccupied and you say specifically that there will be no new ones allowed. I would like to add that in, it's already in there.
It's in.
So why do they, why do we need to overburden this ZBA or the special permit for this?
You would by effect, uh, have a, why would parking prior, because while parking has to be addressed by zoning, the license requirements have to have.
Well, I mean, they do the whole, they have to do the entire application process.
No, sorry.
And then through licensing and. What's applying a special permit?
I'm thinking about documenting the fact that a. Absentee on short-term is legal. So if you don't have a special permit, it's going to be, have to some process by which you say that this has been, that this has been allowed. It has to be, maybe it's a special zoning compliance permit that the zoning administrator issues for it. If you don't want to have a residence, if you only, the purpose of a special permit, in addition to having some type of discretion, maybe is to allow residents and neighbors to weigh in. The purpose of not having a special permit is to exclude residents from being. Um, so if you don't want to have that public hearing process, then you have to substitute something else for the special permit in order to have something in the books that says the absentee of short-term.
I don't, or I'm talking in Spanish. So I want to say, see, right? Any of this stuff.
I've been still concerned about this and that I'm concerned that, that we're. We're not talking specifically about the number of units that, that potentially applied. When we talked about this in April, this was 10 or 15 units made.
Did you speak up a little bit? Can't, can't hear.
What we heard in the last meeting was it could be as many as 50. I, I just, I'm not comfortable with this at all, not, not understanding how many units it applies to and, and what the impacts. I just think we're, we're, we keep backing off on what was a very, uh, very well took together zoning amendment last fall. We, we keep backing away from that with, with amnesty provisions, with softening parking provisions. And I just, I don't understand why this. And, and you're, you're now granting, you know, permission for units to continue to operate. You don't know how many units there are. Granted permission for them to continue. I, I just don't know why.
Well, we. Yeah, I mean, we do know because the, the number that we were given by Jennifer. That was 59 out of 88.
That's, that's.
At that point. It, it is, but to Rick's point, how many of them are actually going to meet the parking requirements and therefore get approved, not a significant amount, if you will. But we won't know until they come forward. Well, we have the option for members to not agree. I mean, that's, we're never going to have, uh, consensus there on any of these points. So we can still leave. What we had in here, we said five members supported the recommendation, two minority opinions, one member wouldn't permit them, um, anywhere in the city. And the other one said, and I believe this was yours, Bob. Uh, who proposed it, um, if the number of such units is significantly above the estimate in 10 and 15, so your position is still the same. So we're basically all the same, other than the idea that we just, um, remove the special permit proposal and go for a special zoning certificate by the zoning administrator. But to memorialize that this is an exception and it happens only for these.
And actually, that, that raises another question for me. When will it answer this question? But if it were the zoning administrators, zoning compliance. Would that be able to restrict it to the current owner? I, I almost think the only way to restrict it to the current owner is for a special. Could do that, could, could, could prohibit a change in one of them unless it's covered by a special.
I think it's preferable and certainly more defensive on its, uh, more consistent with what I've seen, they were saying over the past is, is that's better permit. However, I do think, yeah, the better it can be here. Uh, but I do think it might be possible to, with the ordinance, make that, um, a condition that it's only for the, the currently, um, you know, the current owner and operator to be able to be eligible for that. But after that, the ordinance itself restricting its passage to the next party, uh, I do think that's feasible. However, to your point, I'd more insist on this than using, I think, if you can say preferable to restrict it by way of the boards, uh, friend, this was a permit and conditioning, you know, or explicitly, but I don't think there's anything that would, uh, ministry ordinance having that same, uh, substance that existed.
So maybe what I'd suggest in that, in that regard is to say, to, to create a zoning certificate, zoning compliance certificate. If that will achieve the results that we're, that we're asking for, and if we revise that the council intended, then into the bottom, we can take this.
This theory is about one aspect was. Mentioned that, that one criteria for approval of, of one of these units might be that they meet the parking requirement. Haven't we also had discussions that, that parking as it exists right now is, is grandfathered. If a residence doesn't meet the parking requirement, um, they could be, the parking would be grandfathered.
It's a primary residence, but not let, but the, whatever we agree on with parking.
So if it's a single family residence, then it's be. Free as, as a non-ear on by.
They have all street.
What's the parking?
Permit is for any single family.
What if they don't have any?
Two, 1.5 or two, whatever, two, and they don't.
How is that, how is that property different from an owner of, uh, a short-term, that doesn't have any?
That's a problem.
It's a problem.
Parking requirement.
It's the same, same regulation.
That you know what it says. That's why we create.
There's no, there's no additional parking requirement for a single family short-term.
That's the own, own share because technically we.
And that house doesn't have any. No additional parking is required.
And there's no.
Own share.
There's no just impact.
Sure.
It's the same as if somebody lived there all the time.
I'm talking about, if, if you go to the definition. Sorry.
It's our, where, where was?
Parking or what?
Only get to the three definitions, so.
Oh, sorry, did we order it itself?
Are we talking about investor?
I'm trying to, I'm trying to compare the, uh, home share. So he said, nothing.
Trying, I'm trying to compare the, uh, home share. If I have a home share. My primary residence and I currently don't have any off-street park. There's no parking, that, that's still.
Can you go away?
Still allow.
You go away, uh, rent it to somebody else while you're away. So your car is moving away, somebody else's car is.
So now we're saying. I've got a piece of property and not the owner occupied. It's a single family house and it has no.
That's not a home share. That's, that's.
And it's the same kind of.
Same way.
So, so, basically, it's the same.
Ask it is what's the parking requirement?
Parking requirement, if you have no parking, you rent, if you were investor owner, rented it out for somebody on a year lease, that person that wrote will park in the street. And if you rent it out as a short-term rental, that person parks in the street.
Because you would be, what Bonnie said, that a lot of these places won't be approved because they don't meet the parking requirement. I think they will meet the parking requirement because they don't currently have off-street parking and we're not asking. It's what Rick just said. So a lot of those 59 units wouldn't be approved if it's got it adjusted to the limits.
But I think, I think that, well, hence how you, I guess, if you go back to that language, I don't know, under the report. It doesn't say there that those can be gra, can be vested from, can be non-conform. It says they have to meet the parking requirement, which is different than the non-conform. So I, I think that's saying we have to meet the parking requirement. Maybe we need to be more precise.
Because if it's comparable to a home share, as Heather was saying, then, um. All of those would be, would be, um, destined for parking.
I, I just, I really disagree with that. I think that, I think that it's a, um, it's a separate use. For, for what we're doing here, if you do it, is to create a separate use, which is not a home occupied, homemade, an owner occupied STRU. It's a new use, which is, which is an investor.
We need to define.
Yeah, and, and so, and so it has to comply with all the.
Then if it's a single family home, you have to define parking requirement or otherwise.
For the parking requirement, parking requirement is defined in the ordinance, two spaces per unit.
That makes sense, true.
Okay.
You, what, 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 what you just said a few minutes ago, it's a lot of these 59 units won't be approved because they don't meet the park.
Right.
And we better define that.
Well, as I said, it's, it's two spaces per unit. So we just need to clarify, not define, clarify.
If I could, and one of the points of debate with the council would act was whether or not to require books to, uh, to, or a lot of the ground level spaces that apply to the residential, because it's, it's there, the baseline residential unit that's there. So maybe you could be explicit here before it as to, uh, whether that's something that should happen here.
I think we're getting. Now you're saying some of these units have to comply with zoning, parking requirement, which are the ones we're talking about right now. And, and others, following other categories, to find a separate requirement. It's kind of overly complicated.
That's the problem.
That's the problem with investors.
Zoning determines the parking, we're all short term.
Well, I, okay.
Which is where we started on this.
I understood, I, I, I forgot where we started because it's been so long. I have always thought that an owner occupied unit didn't lose its destiny simply by being an owner occupied unit. And it has to, so, so if you have a, a limited share unit, for example, let's, let's, let's take the home share. Home share unit, you live in the house, you're required to have two spaces. If you don't have those two spaces, you're legally, you're okay because you're legally non-conforming. And you don't lose the ability, you know, you can, you can switch that out for a month, somebody coming to stay in your house for a month. Now, limited share unit, so that's, that's, that's where I see the no impact of parking. You know, limited share unit, where you're renting out rooms in your house. If you have no, if you have no parking spaces and you want to rent out a room in your house, I think what we said was, you don't have to provide three parking spaces for that one. You only have to provide one parking space for that one. So you are required to provide additional parking spaces for the short term unit. You're now required also to remedy all of your own, um, parking requirements. Uh, the same thing with owner adjacent. Owner adjacent, I just can't see that, that being an issue because, oh, it's also. But I think the investor, um, in the absence of, is a different, is a different beast. And that's where you say, okay, you can't do that on a short term basis unless you're compliant and so.
So you're saying that there wouldn't be, uh, investor owned, short, uh, limited share?
It can't be.
No, they have to, they have to be the whole unit.
The limited share has to be occupied by a room.
Yeah, sure. Yes. I, I'm still trying to understand, I've got two single family houses. Both, both are occasionally short term residents. One is owner occupied and what you're saying is there's no real parking requirement for that if they, they don't have.
If they do have a home share.
The other, if they do have, the other is not owner occupied and they do have, like. So if, if that's what we're saying, I think you have to make that very clear because that's the criteria by which those fifty-nine units are being reviewed. And, and maybe there are only ten of these units. The way this is written right now, there, there is no parking requirement. That's what's the same as, as a, a home share.
I, I really completely disagree with you because I think saying it has to comply with all requirements of the ordinance, including off street requirement, parking requirement, means it has to comply with all requirements.
And then you go to the off street part?
No, no, we're talking.
You don't have that, you don't need.
No, that's not in the parking requirement. That's not in the parking requirement. So I, I would be happy to add to that phrase, just to make you happy. Um, uh, saying something must comply with all requirements of the ordinance, including the off street parking requirements, with no provision for testing of non-conformities, that would take care of, that just clarifies.
What is the justification between that differently than the home share? Because you, so we say that these people can't rely on their, you know, grandfathered off, off street parking. Then they have to sell their house because they can't use it as a short term rental or they use it as a long term rental.
Right.
So they're still far as parked there anyways. So, I mean, to the extent that we're concerned that the short term rental units are blocking up the streets, it's.
I think, right, my point of view, I think the issue is, um, trying to, trying to, uh, try to limit the amount of long term housing that is, that is lost tied up in short term values.
Which gets to my, which gets to my other point, which is I think it should be limited to one per investor owned property. They were talking in the city council about three. And I think it should just be one because everybody else on the other categories are allowed one. Why should we allow them anymore? Get into a business in the, in the neighborhood to, to quote one of our members. This is kind of commercial operation for these people. And as you say that, they can turn them into long term rentals. We're not taking away income, maybe we're taking away, you know, over the top income. But, but they can still, they're not left with a dead property. They can rent it tomorrow as a long term rental or they could sell it for stads of money and get out of it. But, you know, it's not like we're hurting them. And so this idea of allowing under certain circumstances, an investor owned property is sort of bending to the, to the comments that we heard, that people, you know, serve some consideration that they have a property or more, but in this case a property that they would like to use as an investor or term rental.
And I also do think there is a need for short term rentals.
Oh, yeah, we're not throwing them out. It's just this investor one is the complicating factor because those of us who live around them know that it's a big difference in having an owner of the house and not having an owner of the house.
It's a huge.
Yeah, so.
And, and, you know, to me, all of this lies in the face of, of the goals that this, that are stated at the beginning. Uh, and why this started with only for the occupied units because it obligates them only to sign a particular. If you're at a distance and, and you're renting another property, another part of the city, then oversight goes away. It's a completely different.
There are a couple of other things within the Salem, uh, ordinance I thought was worth considering. Uh, for an investor property, they must petition, um, for a license or a special permit or whatever you decide they're gonna, whichever of the two of those they're gonna go for, within sixty days of the date of the passage of the ordinance. I'm gonna just add that in because that puts a stopper on it. Um, even though they have to have been registered by date of new advertisement, they can't wait forever and just operate the way they've been operating. They need to apply within sixty days for the ordinance to accept it. I'd like to add that on there. And let's go back to special. I'm gonna leave the special, I'm the only one arguing for it. I don't, I'm not gonna die for it. And it does make sense to have a special permit with the oversight and, and the, uh, memorialization and, uh, record. Um, so they have to apply for the special permit, uh, within sixty days of acceptance of the ordinance. Well, these people may not try it, or it's, I mean, it's supposed to, yes, that's in the bottom, it's, you know, who did it? Sorry, in the ordinance itself, it's been added. Is this friends? No, this is investor. It's not called that at all. But I'm not using that as the investment. It's the, it, that's been used by the council, but we're not using that word. Because it, it is, it is, but I mean, it's with all these criteria, they can't just walk in and get a permit. That's what I think, I must, I must. But all the people have to apply within sixty days, not just these investors. I don't know anything about that.
Yeah, just the investors. It's your limitation timeframe then.
Yeah, yeah.
For those, but anybody else could open up one whenever they don't settle down in the future.
Pre-existing conforming, that they also qualify within sixty days. We're not talking about, there, there's a limited number of us who support that idea. Of, of existing short term, other types of short term renters. I got used to like that with a little bit of stuff. Oh, no, no, yeah, my question just is everybody, like, all of those who are, who, they go home to all of those? Will they all be notified for that same sixty day or is it just these? I think that's, that's a question. All of them will be notified that there's a new ordinance in place and you are operating in violation of it unless you apply for, within a certain timeframe. And the timeframe only affects the investor once, I think. Um, yeah.
It will have to be some kind of.
Yeah, you'll be subject to. There's some, there's some problems. Well, you're, you're in violation if you don't get a license. Oh, I see what you mean. It has to be within sixty days if you're currently, if you're currently on.
Thirty-six months, if you say, you have to get three, six months. I think, I think we were talking about twenty-four, first, this point, some of those.
Yeah, yeah, rather than chasing them, I just think, you know, they, they all have a certain number of days. It might go smoothly.
The problem is notification, that's if there's ones that aren't registered with the state or what they.
Well, if they, then they're violation. So that's the problem. I'm just saying those who really want to apply. Okay, so this is the deadline to apply for all other types other than investor. So. What do we think it is? Because the person writing this up is not gonna know what it is.
Well, whereas there's just a timeframe where the city will start enforcement, like a expectation rather than. I mean, if they don't apply within sixty days, then what happens? Then they should apply.
Yeah, so, so you're saying enforcement date, which was originally maybe January next year. If you're not in compliance, I mean, you don't have a license, you're.
So then that's kind of when they should apply.
Take care of it.
Wait, or, or.
But I think we're putting a, a deadline on the investor properties because they are a special.
And if they don't do it, then they're out of luck.
Right, then they are out of luck. So I think that works, just letting enforcement take care of the rest of the question. All right, Salem, um, also said. That's it. I looked at Amesbury and Quincy, but they did not have any specific to Salem. Salem's a good example, which we'll call it, thanks to you that. Um, the numbers of, numbers of members who have supported this were different numbers now with those people participating. I don't know much about that. So represents, we can leave it the way it is, it just represents the difference of opinion from before. I don't think we can count over.
I think that's indicative enough.
Yeah, it's indicative enough, it's good. Um, the only other question was around the parking. Because the new ordinance suggests, uh, recommends just one parking space per unit for a for all of them. A limited share and for theaters.
It's one, one per bedroom, aren't they?
Per bedroom. Uh, is it that restrictive? Because if the council goes with that, they'll wipe them all out tomorrow. That.
I think that's what.
Better, yeah. That was what was. All right, let me read it. Um, this is, this is the right version, five, two. Where the existing residential use is legally non-conforming, so this is the first one we're talking about. As to the off street parking requirement of this ordinance, such non-conformity may be maintained and only additional parking spaces required for the unit, the guest bedrooms, need be provided. Such instances, no special permit for non-conformities shall be required for the alteration of the parking account. Within the Plumile and Overlake District, yeah, it's okay. All required parking for strewn use shall be located off street and on site, except that off street, on street is allowed in the downtown Overlake District. An owner adjacent rental unit shall have one additional parking space for the strewn use, regardless of the number of guest bedrooms. And in addition to any parking required for the underlying use, including any legally pre-existing parking that I'm formally. So owner adjacent rental use requires only one additional parking.
On top of those two, so, so, so in the four you, the zoning requirements for, for parking spaces, two for the primary use, two for the short term, owner adjacent use. And then one addition, it's actually five. If it were, if it were not a short term, then it would require four parking spaces. But because it's a short term, it requires one additional.
So adjacent units?
Owner adjacent units is the second housing.
Okay, and if it weren't a short term rental?
It would require two for the primary residence, two for the second family residence, because they're the two family residences.
I know it works.
If there were two houses. It's two for you.
It's a two family house, right, yeah.
Or, or two houses.
Space.
Okay, so you mean, so it's fine.
Five, yeah. But, but is it, but if there's a, you know, to box one, if those two, that duplex has no onset requirement, then there's only one parking space required for short term, because they're grandfathered, that's the, for this. Now, when you think of it, it's, if you, if you had space for a parking space on your, beside your house, I think you typically use that parking space. So, I just, I just don't see that situation coming up. If you, if they have room to put a parking space for the short term, by when they already be using a parking space for higher.
Right, and do you, like, if you don't have a driveway, then create one? That grant up to, like, the two off street parking, it's you then. Can you still maintain the grandfathering for those two spaces and then just add the non-conform driveway?
Yeah, yeah, that's a, yeah, that's pretty, that's pretty, uh, and again, I think it gives us a little bit to how, how, uh, explosive they are on the ordinance, um, some of these situations.
Well, this one is up for discussion with the council. We should point that out, right?
And it's worth mentioning, like, the report, uh,
Well, I hope we know when they're coming up because I'll go to that meeting and explain it. The on-site parking and then what happens? So it doesn't allocate. Yeah, it happens to the new use. Yeah, invested, well, maybe that's what they'll do, that will be the way to identify it. So this is for the fifth parking space. And now, and the off street parking goes to the unit. But that's, I know it does. What happens to the best aid?
So one more, two, two more. On your. You talked about this on board, well, this. Whenever this guy's, that's gonna be, you know, I, I call them, it's tight enough, then it's, when tested in, if, if it's too tight, step back and, and loosen some of the standing. But if this becomes a loose guideline to begin with, uh, everybody's just turning on it and, and that's loose, I don't know. And, and it's very hard to get tighter with that. So I, I just want to keep raising my hand, fellows, for that. As we, we talked about this, once we stepped back from where we were last fall on some of these points, we, we are opening this up to the potential world people getting on the, in the situation that maybe now we may go a little tighter with certain cities.
Yeah, so it's good that the parking is as tight as it is in this draft. Um, so what we were just talking about and what everyone's brought up is the council's need to rethink what it means for the owner adjacent parking for invested part of it, and the community party as a result of wanting to have a short term rental there. For a home share rental unit, no additional parking, talk about that. Um, a limited share shall have one additional parking space per guest group, correct? So that's tight, that's good, because you can loosen it, like you said, but you can't tighten it up necessarily. So a limited rental unit shall have, limited share shall have one additional parking space per guest bedroom in addition to any parking required for the underlying, including any legally pre-existing parking that I'm following. So that's, I don't think that in there. You could either wipe out a lot of potential ones or it gets questioned enough that they have to revisit it. But they'll have, they, the council will have more concrete experience by that point.
So I, see, I have a question or just a comment. Irrespective of what the, the zoning ordinance says, as I read what we proposed for the parking, I'm not sure I see any genes in our recommendation. Okay, I'm sure I'm saying that.
I don't think there are. It's just around the vesting and the question about parking for. It's just around the vesting and the question about parking for owner-adjacent units. That's all that has to be adjusted.
I would, I would. I would wonder whether we want to, like of our previous discussion, whether under number one, we want to say that this does not apply. If, if there is a, a special permit or something for it, that's about short-term running, this is not applied. You want to say that? That the disgusting, this, this continuation of vesting does not apply to a vesting. Because we had that discussion back.
I'm going just this weekend, just the time you need to sign that out. Just so you have to do that. I, I made that a, that, that plan six months ago, six weeks ago, knowing that you have to sign.
You just.
Yeah, right. Okay, so we'll work on revising this, sending it to the council because we've got a deadline of twenty-one days or something. But we're within it.
Yeah, they're looking, obviously, they're all Monday, they'll, they, they get it.
There is a meeting Monday night because I'm gonna be, I'm gonna reappoint. Um, I don't know if this is on the agenda.
I totally believe that the chair is expecting other than that.
Could have done that one yet.
So if we have a little bit of time, Bonnie, it's your plan to make these changes and perhaps circulate to everyone to ensure that.
Over there and just.
If it's seven-zero, it's nine-zero or, or.
Yeah, I want eyes on every aspect of it.
Okay.
You buy email with direct comment back to me. Unless we takes us over, but.
So this, this all just applies to our recommendations to them.
It's, it's just regular things.
My, my, my concern was when they, when, when they did the, when we had the joint session and stuff, and they were cutting things out of the, the. The ordinance, and so they were saying, oh, paid it by the licensing. So I, I was questioning whether we should remove all that because my thought was, by removing some of that, are we handing the notice to the public of the requirements? If it's only in the zone, if it's only in the licensing, they look at the zoning and say, okay, I'm gonna go, but oh, I got caught by the licensing.
No, they get, they have to pass both.
Yeah, but when they look at that first, my thought was that we leave it in there just for notice purposes.
Well, if it's more zoning, if it's more licensed, if it's not strictly zoning, I mean, Rick's been very good about this. It just doesn't sit within a zoning ordinance, it's gotta be that. So all some of the licensing, that still has to go through, and they're gonna have to reconcile the tool to make sure that nothing falls through cracks. This is just our recommendation. So as amended, I'll take a motion to. Send our recommendations report to the city council. Second? Don?
No, I think that was.
Oh, Heather, okay. And all those in favor?
Hi.
Thank you. Okay, so now, that'll, that'll be said.
Don's gonna disappear because he's not going to bed tonight, he's actually going to the airport first.
No, I get it, it's week fifteen, I got like four hours.
Have a break vacation. We're gonna, we're not gonna see you the end of the month?
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not here in, I'm, I'm around for two weeks, so I'll miss the next twenty-four meetings.
Okay, and we're not, this is a precursor to what I'm gonna announce, we're not meeting on August third. We're not having a meeting the first week of August.
August, all right, chat.
See, have a great time. We're just gonna have the one meeting on the end of August. I think we deserve to tonight, everything we've been through, I wish I could give you all the next meeting that we can. We've got too much, it's not too much, but we've got enough stuff backed up. All right, there was a letter, a letter about public access from Jean Castello, Andy, that's Andy, offline with her. It was more the same of what we talked about tonight, the technology, but it included why we can't be in the city council chambers because we basically don't have access to it anymore, and that's the best we can write in on the technology. So we're stuck with this space. We only have minutes that people have time to review for the eighteenth, I have a motion to approve those minutes. That, second?
Second.
Alden? They were liberated, other not, not substantive edits, so. Anyone else does? All right, all those in favor? Any opposed? I was gonna, I keep, you don't see anything else on here about Waterfront West. And that's because I'm using it as part of the updates, and I know Jamie's been working on some stuff, but I'm not gonna actually show us any of that now. We've been talking formally, so I'll make it a formal request. We want to put together a committee to work more specifically on design scenarios and zoning. Take it beyond words, put it on paper or put it into a word specifics in the block model, see what it would look like. Where are we on that?
So we're, we have a, we can, Bob and I agreed on this committee to forget zoning. And the idea would be to meet three times between now and August sixteenth. And once I have no rule like to be in the committee, I will do a group call, find three nights. I think since we're not meeting on the third as planning board, that actually opens that up as one of the potential nights for us to meet. So if, if anybody is interested in actually doing some serious sprinting on zoning for the next six weeks.
Raise your hand.
I know that it's a busy time, a lot of people can't commit to digging around for. For all fringe, I think you really do need that system. So anybody would like to participate? Is that Jamie and you can unset. So do you?
What's the idea?
Uh, it would be by, you would like to have a report to the board on August seventh.
So I'm gone. But.
We could.
Otherwise, I could. I will be.
Too, but just a first working session on August third, for anybody who wants to attend it. I know it's because I'm pushing this because I get the sense from the mayor's committee that they will move ahead with N E D on broad stroke. Positions on the term sheet that we are considering to get N E D's reaction to it. And I'm just afraid they're gonna get too far down the road with N E D for us to be able to propose specifics that the zoning requires.
Well, I think, I think we could, I certainly would want to have a first meeting within the next two weeks. So August third could be our second.
Right, just do two meetings. But I don't see what you come up with, do you do this preliminary or where you're going with it, what you're seeing? I could also go back to that committee and say, this is the work we're doing so far. We need some of your consulting money to do the more precise design work that none of us has the time or possibly the expertise to do. So I can show them some progress. So this is the two motivation, so they can share something that they did before, possibly ties to some things we don't want to. Never has to get some more money to.
So we won't, we won't be meeting the board, you're saying we have, have something, the second meeting will be the third.
Yeah.
Right, I think certainly, I was, I was sort of seeing the third is absolutely the stage for the second meeting. So I was, I was looking for the first meeting between the eleventh and the nineteenth and the second meeting between the twenty-fifth and the third. So. So certainly, second. It's gonna depend on who's available, which nights. So if you'd be interested in participating.
Yeah.
Have a couple of meetings between now and the third.
Sure.
But let me just do a, a quick. And it can't be more than, it can't be five.
We have four, and it's gonna be a public meeting, it'll be posted, you only need forty-eight hours' notice to check it to the planning office. Probably work in the mayor's conference room or some other small space.
So in the next year.
No, it's all in person.
Okay, so people can show up if they really.
People can show up if something posted.
But they don't have to.
Yeah, and, and, and Rick's the chair, so, you know, if you guys decide you're just having a working session, you don't want any input from the public, you just go to work, it might go much, but I have this experience from something like twenty years ago when we did the strategic land use plan. It was two thousand four, nineteen, oh, eighteen has a whole lot better than twenty. But we worked in a room, I mean, there must have been channeled us on that committee. And there would be as many, you know, as fifteen people sitting watching us, lots of a lot of charming, we were charming. We just went on about our business, and that's the way it's supposed to be, right? It's a public body and it's open meeting law. And everything that was discussed there in terms of the substance was brought back to planning board, which is what best we can do anyway. So there's nothing hidden about this.
So you're, you're searching for seventeen, for sure, it's. Okay, I will send out the whole. We'll try, I'm gonna give a whole bunch of dates and. What is your, what is that?
Like I can see I have a six P M showing. Three at four, you know.
Oh, yeah. That's interesting, I'll send a bunch of.
So we, we have the ability to print some, some things. We can only bring a lot of my sons to you now, so we can send some things to the printer, but depending on how much you're setting over there, we may not have a bunch. So, of course, we don't have a great large budget for it, so, so we send things to a printer. So if you can be specific, if you can live in a home, but it's gonna be your first probably possible.
And a genre.
Any other?
That's all, that's a, that's a.
Andy, any other updates?
I know that's.
I'll take a motion to adjourn.
The.
Alden, second. Beth, all those in favor?
Hi.